Sorry about that.
Planning first.
We have one person who had a medical appointment later, so they'll come out. And then we'll switch.
They're gonna come later?
No, he's planning, we have one that's coming first because he has a medical appointment in the afternoon.
Oh, got it.
And we had somebody else canceled first.
So one, two, three, right?
Evelyn, can I start? Okay. Good morning. I hear my call the Palm Springs City, Palm Springs Special City Council Meeting of June sixth twenty twenty four to order. City clerk, you got the roll call, please?
Let the record reflect, we have three members present and we have a wall.
Okay. The next item is public testimony. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the city council on agenda items only. The city council welcomes public input. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. You're asked to please begin to gain your time by trying with what agenda item or items you're speaking about. City clerk, do we have any public comment?
We have no public comment.
Okay. Uh, we will then go into our interviews for the um historic site preservation board, measure J oversight commission and planning commission. Um, and we are going to start with Thomas LaRita for the planning commission. Thomas, how are you?
Morning, everyone. Good to see you. Thank you for adjusting your schedules to meet my needs.
So I am Mayor Jeffrey Bernstein, Mayor Potemron DeHart and and council member Grace Garner. Um, we are going, this is gonna be a short and sweet interview. Perfect ten minutes um to ask you some questions.
Okay.
Um, I will just let you know, we, we uh, we had a lot of applicants for all of our commissions. We had hundred and eight applicants go overall uh on planning commission. Uh, we had, I think about a dozen or so. Depending on the va- on the incumbents, we may only have one vacancy.
Okay.
So um uh, why don't you let us know why you wanna be in planning commission?
Well, determination number one, because I've applied for this position for my third time around, so I'm very determined to be yellowed because it's something I believe in. It's something I wanna move forward with as well. I think I bring a lot to the table for the planet commission. Given my history in real estate development as well as uh doing a lot of studies for um in my own business and healthcare, developing uh business plans for cancer centers, HIV centers throughout the United States. So I have history both in uh healthcare, planning and uh development.
Yeah, well, good to have you back.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Um, I don't know if you remember the questions I asked last time around.
I do, actually.
But it may have, uh, I don't know if I uh asked you how you feel about um the hundred thousand square foot fulfillment centers uh in North Palm Springs.
Well, quite actually, I did a lot of research on that since our last time go around. And I actually um, I approve it. I think it's gonna bring uh a tremendous amount of jobs to our community. Uh, I think the location, as long as it meets the environmental components as well as the uh safety of our animals and all that, water retentions. Um, I think it's something that's really positive for Palm Springs.
Thank you.
I was just curious, I just had a question. Uh, so I tried to do my uh research on that as well. And then the study group is actually the one that's actually building that.
It hasn't even come in front of the council.
Oh, it has, yeah.
I'm just, I'm just, but I asked you last time, just in the um big picture, uh, but uh council hasn't seen it and I don't know when we will, do we know? Yeah, it's, it may be some time before it comes to council.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
Thank you, well, it's nice to have you back. Um, can you speak a little bit to what you feel you bring to the planning commission that isn't already there?
Um, I just as a matter of fact of what I'm bringing to the planet commission is the ability for me to do a lot of research for the planet commission. Uh, I'm actually retiring at this point as well from my position at Blue Bridge Pacific Group. Uh, and so I have the ability to do a lot of research for you, the planet committee, as well as my past experience in not only in Palm Springs in the valley, but also in New York and New Jersey.
So what do you think are the big issues facing the planning right now?
The big issues I see right now is that you have Palm Springs Airport. That's opening up right now, and I know that uh, I think the questions at hand right now are whether or not they're gonna meet the um architectural component for the city of Palm Springs and traffic flow uh as well as public transportation. Um, and I think that's gonna be big, I think it's needed, but I will say personally for me, when I come out of the airport in Palm Springs, I love the aspect of just coming out to the open and I would hate to see it would lose its component. So I think the airport is one thing, and then you have a lot of different uh other plans that are coming up as well for new developments and both commercial and residential.
Um, how do you see the planning commission's role in helping to solve our housing uh shortage or the need for more affordable housing? Uh, well, how do you see the commission's role in answering that call?
Well,
as far as housing for um lower income and middle income actually as well, because right now you have a group of people that are middle income seniors, both gay, straight, whatever, that are going into components of having to find housing for themselves. Uh, you have issues with uh people who have been in long-term relationships that find themselves needing to sell their homes uh because of care of their loved ones and things. And so I think it's really important that we actually concentrate on more affordable housing that we can actually expand on. I think the project that's on hand right now is a beautiful project. And I think we need more of those as well.
What about height restrictions and building multi floors?
I, I mean, I see the three-story, four-story component that's in place like living out as. Uh, I think those height restrictions are great. I don't wanna see high rises. I kept in New York. When I sold New York City, you don't want to uh look at a park and let's say this is gonna be a sixty-story.
But you're comfortable with four-story.
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
Sorry, Thomas, you mentioned similar affordable housing projects. I'm not sure what you were, which one you were referring.
Uh, the one I'm looking at right now is actually the one that's gonna be on Indian Canyon. This is the senior housing.
Oh, oh, Palm Canyon. Oh, yes, the one that's, that's, it's going up quickly.
It's going up very quickly.
Thank you, I wasn't sure. Okay, thank you.
As well as the homes in the Mirala going up quickly as well.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and, and how do you see about um? You know, because we're going through, are you following the zoning code update and how that may affect everything?
Excuse me?
The zoning code update the city is going through. Are you familiar with that?
Yeah, I am familiar with it, and I think that um zoning has played a role for the city of Palm Springs City Council as well as the planet commission. And I think that the structure in place is good, but I think we need to look at some areas of zoning that need to be redeveloped for. Uh, I think one of the things that at play right now is the um the special events that they want for the um Serena Park and all those areas for um people that, you know, marijuana distribution, all that. I mean, those are, you're looking for areas of that. And I think you need to specify some zoning changes for that in order for people to have these events that are going in place.
Um, just for the record, uh, council of the whole stage is present.
I apologize for being late, I used to be my doctor's appointment.
Well, and I'm going to.
Yeah, for the record, Thomas is applying for planning, most of planning are later, but he had a doctor, so we're doing it first.
Yes.
Um, uh, do you have any questions since you just walked in?
I don't, I've been listening to the answers.
Okay. Thomas, do you have questions for us?
No, I just thank you for the opportunity at this time. I really thank you for changing your schedule to meet my needs, but I'm very determined at this point in time. This is my third interview and I would truly like to represent the city of Palm Springs, planning commission and also represent the city council.
Okay, anything we didn't ask you wanna tell us?
Okay.
Okay, all right, well, thank you very much, Thomas.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
Thank you.
Um, so just, just for the record, Christie for planning, we have four vacancies and three incumbents. So assuming we appoint them all and we're not asking any comments to do interviews, we only have one open.
Got it, thank you.
So now we are going to switch to historic site preservation and we have four interviews. The uh historic site, the first four.
It only have three.
No, I'm looking online, okay.
Hi.
Hey, good morning. For this opportunity, sorry about that. Um, what's your name?
It's Jack.
Okay, 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 so uh, hi, I'm Mayor Jeffrey Bernstein, Mayor Potemron DeHart, council member Grace Garner and Christie Postage. Uh, um, we are interviewing for historic site preservation board. Um, just so you know, there's only one app, uh, one vacancy on this board. Um, so let me start off and why do you want to um be on HSPB?
Well, I just retired from my full-time job at Fox Entertainment last Thursday.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Been there a long time. Uh, I've lived in Palm Springs for four years. Uh, unfortunately, my job at Fox prevented me from really getting involved in the community. I worked uh about sixty hours a week. So um, as soon as I retired, I, I wanted to do something in the community. Architecture has always been a really big hobby of mine, a really good interest. That's what drew me to Palm Springs, the mid-century modern architecture, uh, the post-war architecture. I just really have a passion for it. While I may not know as much as maybe some of the other candidates, I have a real passion for learning. I was a project manager at Fox. I dealt with a lot of really large personalities on a daily basis, constant deadlines, a lot of detail and follow-up. I went to uh the meeting uh for the historic site on Tuesday. It was really super interesting. I, I feel like I just absorbed it all and I want to know more. And um you know, I, I'd like to just, you know, echo what the outgoing chairperson said. When she first started in her position, she perhaps didn't know as much as the other board members about historic preservation, but she learned such a great deal during her six-year tenure. And I feel like I could bring the same sort of enthusiasm and commitment and dedication to the role. Uh, you know, I'm an avid walker. Uh, every night I go out with my partner, we try and get our ten thousand steps in. And it was just interesting with this Tuesday, three of the structures that were on the agenda, the uh, the restroom at Victoria Park, we walk by that nearly every day. And just the week prior, we were wondering landscaping going on, what's gonna, you know, be happening with the restroom? So it was really quite ironic that that was on the agenda. And then um the Harriet Van Horn House on uh Linda, uh Mira Linda, we walked by that as well and just I I thought it was just so ironic that some of the houses that we walk by, we see daily, um, were on the agenda. It's it's, it's kind of me in a nutshell and I live in a class four house. Excellent. What, what, did you watch the last city council meeting? Well, I was here in person. Oh, sweet. I was in How do you feel about the site designation for the building on Arenas and Palm Canyon, the west side of the court? Um the chicken house. A chicken?
Oh.
I, I, I I ran from the lion. In what's the name, it's uh the restaurant. K- K- Kaiser Grill, sorry. Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Did you watch that? I mean, in the
That was the that was the previous meeting. I had read the, the minutes, but I did not attend that. I unfortunately was working. Um, so I, I'm familiar with the Kaiser Grill building, so is that the building you're referring to? No, that's cool. Uh, how, what, what is the most significant thing that you think the preservation board is doing um recently that you appreciate? Um, what is, what is of their work that you appreciate the most? Well, I, I just, the mission statement of just identifying those properties, sites, building structures, you know, that are worthy of historic designation. Um, I just, I really admire that. And again, my own interests, I do a lot of driving, exploring the neighborhoods, just looking for really interesting buildings. I'm going on vacation tomorrow, going to Detroit, and I'm gonna be exploring some old car factories. I just, I'm really interested in preserving. I'm kind of a fixer-upper. When I uh first moved here, I did a, a weekend apprenticeship with um, his name is the furniture doctor. His name is George and I was restoring furniture. I also collect vintage cars. Um, I was in the eighty-fifth uh wow uh, uh, anniversary celebration and actually Hugh Cactor was in, in my car, which was super cool. Um, there's a number of Hugh Cactor homes in my neighborhood. Um, there's a number of Hugh Cactor homes in my neighborhood. I'm in Vista Norte. Um, it's designed, he's got a role of those, uh, along with William Christel. And I'm actually very interested now that I'm not working. I'd love to figure out who the architect was in my home. It, you know, it's a trapped home, but to me it's beautiful. It's got a lot of charm. It doesn't look like. Um, any other home like in our neighborhood. So, uh. I I I just really love the work that you guys do and I'd love to be able to contribute now that. I have the time and dedication. I love research, you know, just listening to the board members talk about going on the site visits. I. That is like my dream. I do that on my own anyway. My my phone is just full of pictures of homes and buildings and. Uh, you know, the Oasis Hotel. I love Frank Lloyd Wright and Son Lloyd Wright. I just. I just brush up on history.
I just, I should have mentioned, we don't have, these are very quick interviews.
Oh, sorry.
We only have ten minutes per person, but do you have any other questions?
I don't. You've you've shared so much, so I really appreciate that.
Oh, yeah. So that's great. So do you have any questions for us?
Oh, you do? I do.
Oh, sorry.
Questions.
Yes.
Um, how do you think the historic site preservation board? Should balance like preservation with development of the city?
Well, that I was.
Could you say a little bit about what you think their role really should be? And what, how, you know, what their functions are?
Well, it was interesting in the last meeting, some of the board members did ask about some uh properties and some plans. Uh, one of the residents was going to be torn down and uh, Vice Chair Nelson asked if he could see plans for the new. Structure that was being built. And I learned during the meeting that. That was outside of the board's jurisdiction to ask and make decisions on that. They can certainly make recommendations. I thought that was very interesting. I. I'd like to know more so I could, you know, answer your question more thoroughly, but again, it's something. Even if I'm not selected to be on the board, I will probably be at every board meeting because this is something I want to learn and I have the time and it's just greatly interesting.
Thank you. And my first question, sorry, I answered, I asked it in a weird way. Um. How do you balance development with preservation? What's your view on that?
Well, I'm all for it, new development. Uh. I think it's just, it has to be very thoughtful and if, I mean, if. A a building has historical or aesthetic significance, say, you know, the the different criteria that one has to evaluate, you know. I'm the type of person who would probably argue to save that building, um, but I also understand. You know, Palm Springs is a city and you know, it's growing tourism. Um, I think commerce is such an important part of the city that. Uh, you know, I'm, I can't wait to visit the new Thompson Hotel. So I'm, I'm excited for the new businesses, any structures. And that get built. I, I think it is, it is a balance, like you said, and.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I ask every candidate that.
Okay. Um, any other questions for us? Uh, the terms are three-year.
Three-year term, yeah.
Uh, great.
Well, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Very much, Jeff. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'll have to ask you about overseeing Disney toys.
I know.
My three-year-old has questions for you.
I have lots of answers.
You have a great experience. Thank you for considering this commission.
Thank you all.
Amazing resume. Like dream job, right?
I know. Catherine here?
Yes, she's outside. Hello.
Hi Catherine, welcome. I am Mayor Jeffrey Bernstein, Mayor Potemondo Hard, Councilmember Grace Garner and Christie Holstage. Uh, and this is the interviews for the historic site preservation board. Um, just so you know, these are quick interviews, like ten minutes, because we're doing a lot this morning. Um, we do just have one opening on this board. Um, and tell us, why do you want to be on the historic site preservation board?
So. Honestly, I am a gigantic nerd and since graduating from university last year, I'm really feeling the lack of research. Um, and uh, getting to really dive in and and get to getting to learn about things in my life and. I would just really love the excuse to uh. Get to read applications and of uh filled with historic facts and knowledge and getting to do site visits and just learn. More and more about Palm Springs and history and architecture specifically.
Thank you. Can you speak to your background?
Yeah, so I perhaps somewhat surprisingly, I think my experience with medieval studies, that was my uh degree. Uh, is actually particularly relevant to the, to this uh position and to this committee. Uh, because my research, for my thesis, was uh actually not specifically uh about medieval history. It was about Victorian. Interpretations uh and preservation uh. Preservation uh. Reconstruction, recreation of medieval history and medieval architecture and design specifically. So I, in my research, I got to. Understand that this is not new. Preservation, the issues around historic preservation are not new. They have been around affecting communities for. Um, and problems in communities for. Full centuries and um. Uh, what I found most interesting about that research that I got to do was the space that happens in preservation in between destruction, complete destruction and perfect. Pristine preservation where you really get to see a community or an individual's continued interaction with. A historic object or a historic building. Um, and it really ends up being a reflection of a community's changing values uh and interactions with history.
Amazing, thank you. And then you currently are working as a design associate and project coordinator. For an architecture firm, could you speak a little bit about that?
Uh, that's.
In Pasadena?
No, it's here in Palm Springs. Uh, I'm from Pasadena originally. That's where I grew up. Um, and we do have uh, we do have clients in Los Angeles and in Pasadena, but uh, it is primarily based in in Palm Springs, just actually a couple of blocks away. Um, so yes, I get to do uh interior design and project management for this firm and. Uh, I really absolutely love it and I really value getting to. Uh, learn about all the ways that you can uh risk that the ways that you can respect and um. Do changeable things to or removable things to a house that uh. Serve a modern user, but that also are easily removable or that respect the character of a home. Um, yeah.
Sorry, Mary, I jumped in.
No, no, you're okay.
Can you, hi Catherine, can you speak a little bit about what? What what you bring in particular to the historic preservation board that maybe isn't there now?
Yeah, so I think perhaps I should acknowledge my youth. Um. Uh, I I I I don't know who else is applying, but uh it is perhaps slightly unusual that I am twenty-three and I am interested in 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 doing this and then I'm here in front of you today. And I think that would be a really valuable perspective to have on this commi- on this committee. Uh, I, I, I believe, I I I think that the the that. Palm Springs is looking to attract uh and to keep its young residents and. That is something that I I do struggle with as a young resident is finding a community of people who are closer to my age uh to interact with and engage with in Palm Springs. So I'd really love to be a part of, um, and I think that my perspective would be valuable in. Attracting and keeping, in keeping residents. Um, and it's something that I would be really excited about.
Before I forget, you know, Chamber of Commerce has all young professionals in the shit going on.
I have attended several of their events, yes.
And for the record, Councilmember uh Middleton has joined us as well.
An A story. So.
Uh, Catherine, the um. What has the preservation board done recently that you don't agree with?
Oh, that I don't agree with? Oh. That's so interesting. Um. Hmm, that's a great question. So I think that. Um. Perhaps. At times, um, there can be. Uh, more emphasis on um. Perfect preser- and I, and ideal preservation uh rather than um. Good preservation that, but they're just good preservation that allows a a space to continue to be used and appreciated. Um, and promotes like perhaps like economic development. Um, so I know that there's, I I'm not sure that uh this has been decided yet, but. There's an issue with like the plaza um theater with the uh restaurants that are in front of that. Um, and. So. My perspective on those issues is. Uh, typical is, will would typically be to um, to allow for um. The uh, the use of the space um by the community. Um, rather than perfectly and like faithfully uh restoring a building that can no longer really be used.
Hmm.
Um, in a way that can't be used.
Very, thank you.
Do you have anything yet? Okay.
I don't know if we hit ten minutes, did we?
I don't know.
I typically ask. How much time do we have, man?
Oh, we're at ten. We have a few minutes, but we're running a bit like.
I typically ask how you balance development with preservation, but I think you answered that question.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And do you have any issues with the time commitment?
Uh, no.
Um, okay. Uh, is there anything else you want to tell us that we haven't heard?
Um. I guess I would just like to uh reinforce my enthusiasm about this. Um, my. Actually, my my favorite photo of my my father um is, was taken uh right just before I was born in my childhood home and he's. Holding two heat guns and going like this. Um, in my childhood home as he is stripping my craftsman, the craftsman home that I grew, like grew up in, stripping all of the paint from the original woodwork. Um, and. I am twenty-three and don't have my own home to restore yet. Uh, but I am so, so genuinely excited about being a caretaker and a steward. Of uh historic architecture and of history that that's why I'm here in front of you today. I don't have my own home that I can strip all the paint off of. Uh, so I want to be doing um this preservation work as soon as possible.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Uh, in all my years and interviews, uh, you're, I I I'm pretty sure you're the first interviewee that started the interview by telling us you're a gigantic nerd. So I love it. I love.
Probably our first in my years as a twenty-three-year-old too. So thank you.
Oh, thank you, guys. Very, very.
Thank you very much, Catherine.
Yeah, appreciate it. Yeah, we're a little now. No, believe me. I started.
So did Andrew. Are we?
Uh, Andrew said no.
Said no.
Sir Pearlie.
We have permit.
Hi.
permit.
Hello.
I am Mayor Jeffrey Bernstein, Mayor Potemondo Hard, one of the members, uh, Bonner, Holstage, Middleton.
Right.
Um, and these are short interviews, about ten minutes, so you know, um, so ask some questions. We obviously have your application.
Right.
Um, and uh, this is for the historic site preservation board. We currently have one vacancy on the board, just so you know.
Yeah.
Uh, so why do you want to serve?
So um, I owned in uh Vislos Palmas now for uh twelve years. I've lived for six years. I've seen um. Historical homes uh be lost in our neighborhood. Um, and I think that that's something that, you know, preservation is very important. It's what the city to me is about. Also, people come here because of. Uh, our architecture and I think it's something that's very important. The Palm Springs and obviously to me with it too.
Okay, Christie?
Could you explain your background and how to serve the commission?
Okay, so um, I was a project manager. Uh, for Macy's for thirty years and then independently for one of my contractors uh for five years. I'm an industrial engineer. I am very organized and very passionate about things that I that I'm involved in. I was also. Uh, the chair for the Vislos Palmas Neighborhood Organization Board for six years. I um also organized the last three Modernism Week tours for our neighborhood. So I'm very involved in the neighborhood. We are working currently, uh, we've been in communication with Sarah Yoon. About possibly uh historical designation for our neighborhood. Uh, I know it's not an easy task. There's a lot of work that's got to get done, a lot of milestones, but that's something that we think, you know, we'd be the first neighborhood to apply for this. There are a lot of the historical districts. In Palm Springs are um condo associations. I've really no neighborhood that's done that yet, but. I'm really, you know, passionate about stuff like that. And for example, one of the things that um guidance from one P S was. That um the V of the neighborhood organization should be five oh one C fours. Uh, that was wrong because five oh one C fours are for prolific movement. So we did a whole transition of converting ourselves from a five oh one C four to a five oh one C three.
Oh.
Uh, we did that in the last two years and successfully have converted. We're now transitioning out the five oh one C four. So it's all about neighborhood and community.
I mean, how do you see? Balancing development with preservation?
So in that sense, I think um. Development is something that obviously, you know, the whole state is in need of housing. But I think you can do that with a good eye on architecture and preserving some of the history. There's some new home, there's a new home, for example, on Camino Sur. And Monterrey says is being developed, but it has that modernism. I would say touches or modernism um mid-century elements that I think are, could be enhanced what we have today. My concern is on the um demolition and loss of homes or architecture that's not there. I think that then you can do that intelligently. Um, you know, people want to expand, people want to make modifications. You don't want to limit too much. You don't want to become like, you know, I lived in New York City, like Greenwich Village or. She, you know, um, San Francisco, where you're limiting people and then in impacting negatively real estate values.
Hmm.
Thank you.
Grace, that's.
Can you speak a little bit about what you would bring to the historic preservation committee that maybe isn't already there?
So I obviously I'm not in there and I haven't been. I would say engaged as much as I think I could. Um, what I see is that I think there's an architect talking to like, you know, the Gans, for example, the Gans really have really pushed me to this is what is. What are the milestones or what are the things that people have to apply for? Like I would say like an architectural board review. Things like that that I think are, is not. In there yet. Um, I remember talking to Ken Lyons earlier on about this when he was in the position of historical preservation. Um, and I think that there was, it was. In my opinion, a little loose and when people did applications and review. So I think, you know, looking at. Compliance. And applications and making sure that they are um being adhering and the review is complete.
What do you think the? Preservation board hasn't done well?
Looking from our perspective in our neighborhood, I just think that they have not been at first communication. And then also um at the. Review. And allowances for things like demolitions. There's a house one block from us on Topass that was a perfect mid-century, no, nothing touched. It sat vacant for many years, but you know, from one day to the other, it was just demolished. And the permit, from what we understand, the submission for permit for a demo was submitted and it was just passed through.
When was that?
This was uh, I would say last fall. Yeah. I understand that uh Harold, Robin's house, the house I'm telling you about on Camino Sur and Monterrey said that house was not. You know, the certain class classifications, there's four classifications, but it did not meet that because it was after nineteen seventy.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that one was okay. And obviously the construction was really poor.
And what do you think about allowances for commercial buildings to be able to have them be reused in modern day? We have a lot of commercial buildings that are seventy years old that need to be updated.
Oh. I I think, you know, obviously, like for example, the the Bank of America, what a great, you know, I I was, I think everybody was really concerned. And I just drove by it and went in and it's just like they did an amazing job. So I think preservation with consideration. Can be done, but I think it's obviously necessary. I mean, when you see vague, there's a lot of vacancy. Um, in my view, coming from New York City, there's a lot of vacancy here and potential. For opportunity to bring in, you know, new businesses, but I think it's it's necessary. I think necessary not only on um preservation, but also conservation, security. You know, you know, fire upgrades, for example, and it's like that 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 had to be done. It's just, you need to. It's it's mid-century modern, you've got to bring it into. It's it's mid-century modern, you've got to bring it into today's time.
Uh, any other questions from council? Well, do you have any questions for us, anything you want to tell us that we missed?
No, we've been in conversation with you and Ron, so yeah, thank you.
All right.
Thank you for your support, your work for the city, I would say, one of the things that I commend you like for Hurricane Hillary. I mean, the work that you guys did, it was like, I was coming from New York and the East Coast, I was really, really surprised and thank you for all your work.
I appreciate your point.
Yeah, thank you for applying.
Thank you.
Every day.
Uh, so now we are going to move to measure J.
Are we?
What?
I see we have a couple of breaks, are we going to be able to talk about historic preservation during a break?
Yeah, I thought we we should have actually discovered a break after each one, it might have been easier, but um. We can do it this way, because they're all waiting, but yeah, we'll do it during the break, we'll see if we can catch up, we have three openings.
Three openings?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, you're David?
I am.
Okay, so I am Mayor Jeffrey Bernstein, Mayor Potemron DeHart, we have council members Garner, uh, Holstage and Middleton. Um, these are short interviews, we have about ten minutes uh for the Measure J Oversight Commission. Um, and we have just, we have a number of applicants this year, we only have three openings in us, so just so you know. Um, so what is your understanding of Measure J?
Okay, Measure J, I've actually been following for several years. Um, I actually have attended every meeting in the twenty-three, twenty-four session as far as Zoom and I've come to one and I was the only person in the audience, so it's like, okay, a little awkward, so I will start calling in. So I'm very familiar with what Measure J is, how it got started in twenty-eleven and. Uh, the sales tax and it's, you know, the number one contributor to the sales tax is automobiles, and then, of course, hotels is the second one, so I'm familiar with where the funding comes from. The the committee actually gets together, the commission, excuse me, gets the, and I have a head cold, so I have to look at notes to remind me what I'm going to say.
I have to look at notes every day just to.
It's unbelievable. Um, so I'm familiar with what the committee does, the commission does, you know, meets for about an hour and a half per month. There could be behind-the-scenes stuff, I don't know, uh, at the meetings that I've seen, you know, they usually get an update from. Um, like, I think the people's names, Chris in finance, David, who's just back from Public Works, and uh also Joel. Um, some people call him Joel, um, and just get updates on the initiatives that have been there, they've been on hold for a year and not taking apps. I do know that in January they pitched the new application process that will start in, actually, it restarted June third till September thirtieth. Um, that's going to be a big challenge for the new commission coming on. Um, and I just learned last month that they went on a two-year budgeting cycle, so at the. Once they're done with all these initiatives and they pitch to you in January, they then have to start focusing on the budgeting season for the next year. I'm pretty first in.
Great.
So what are the key priorities that you want to advocate for on Measure J?
Um, that's a great question, and really, you know, they're going into a process that can be really overwhelming. You know, in my career, I've done operations, right, for thirty-five years, and operations in a financial institution isn't just, okay, who's showing up the telephone line? It's, okay, annual budget, so what does the finance team need, what does technology need, what does facilities and maintenance need? And what do the retail branches need, right? And then everyone gives you their needs and you're like, okay, I only have this much money, how am I going to divvy it up and what's a priority and what's not a priority? I think what I can add to the commission is helping create that workflow, that streamline, they've had talks about it. And, you know, how do we rate these applications, how do we grade them and what do we do? And I, they haven't nailed anything down that I can see, so I think I could add that structure, uh, really organizing. You know, these upcoming initiatives, but not only that, but they talk a lot about the community initiative projects that are coming, but there's also the whole, that's only six million dollars. You know, they're raising twenty-two million, so how are we looking at what Joel's doing in engineering? You know, he's got nine million for the roads and how we, you know, and to make sure that all of Measure J funds are accounted for and somehow just prioritized.
I just, thank you.
Yes?
Have you followed what's happened with the community projects? Um, and then how do you balance sort of investing, obviously, city council sets the amounts, but how do you balance investing in? Community projects or staff-driven projects or more, because obviously we have a lot more needs than we have funding for.
Right, yeah, I have I, I think you asked how I follow, so yes, follow, definitely, I actually listened to the mayor give his introduction speech at the. The airport commission uh plant meeting the other night, I have been to the parks and recreation meetings. And sat through their little thing where you put the stickers down and stuff like that, so I follow them all and I actually listen to city council every other week as well, so. Um, I know what's out there and, but I don't know what people are going to recommend, right? I am on the board for the Bristow Neighborhood in section uh division three, but, and I know what they want to do and they want to work on a park, okay, well, how does that compare to a park in um? A Victoria Park, right, now I go up to, I do all parks, I'm retired, by the way, early retirement, just me and my dog, so I have plenty of time to. Cover this city, so I go to every single park almost every day and that's in my app, but. Um, and I do that for a reason, because I love to be part of the community, because I like to see what's happening and, you know, and that's why I started getting involved. That's why I started watching the parks and recs meetings and the Measure J readings and and so. It'll be very interesting to see what people prioritize now, do I think roads are necessary, you bet, sewer, water, plumbing, I mean, there's a priority with certain things such as you need. Um, and and it's going to take a lot to try to understand what the priority should be. And I'm going to give you another example, sorry, I talk too much, but the other example is, you know, have we looked at the community initiated projects as far as what section of the city are they coming from? You know, it's very, if you looked at the app, it's very detailed and it's going to require a lot, which is fantastic. But can some people coming from the north or the desert highlands area really have the capability, the time, the energy they put towards putting in that application? So should the commission be helping them, should we be looking at how we came from section three, section four, section five, you know, um, that's my thought process on that.
Thank you.
Right. Anything else you want to tell us?
I'm sorry. Who, me?
Yeah.
You. Oh, can I give you some recommendations, just in case I don't get the job?
Yeah.
So. Uh, in the application process, I listed three different um ideas that I had for marketing. Uh, that's, excuse me, four recommendations that the commission should work on, uh, one, of course, was marketing, one was educating the community and the commissioners on the initiatives. And then also having proper project management, because really, if you think about what we're doing, you're creating many projects, right, throughout the city. Some are very small, some are very big, but a couple of things that I did after I filled out the application was dig a little bit more. And I looked at, um, excuse me, the the code for Measure J commission, right? And you, there's one line on there that just sets me apart and it says it's to be, it's defined. Um, oversee and monitor all Measure J expenses. Little bit more detail there, so when you guys talked about these commissions and needing more detail and helping the commissioners understand what are their roles and responsibilities and priorities. That's too bad, right, is it to actually question Joel and say, do you need nine for the roads or do you not? Oh, well, I have six over here for community and that's great, but, you know, are we really going to spend six and what's a community? And then the other piece of that is to create a new fiscal policy, or not new, but create fiscal policies. Currently, the commission takes one, has one point seven million dollars in what they call an overflow. So if any project goes over budget, they can pull from that, whoa, where's the policy? So you could suck that up in one project, right? Why not create a policy that says, hey, if the initiative is two hundred thousand dollars, okay, you can go ten percent over budget, okay, so you get twenty thousand dollars. If you go thirty percent over budget, you have to come back to the commission and say, why did you go over budget, how did you go over budget? And, you know, and then if that's acceptable, we'll let it go forward, if not, and just maybe create some more guidance and structure around just putting up one point seven million out there, say, oh, that's a overflow. Whoa, 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 you know, maybe it's not justified, uh, this is all my banking background, by the way. Uh, and then the last thing, of course, is, excuse me, promotional marketing and enhance, so. I just created three different things, and I think the commission should actually look at creating a subgroup on governance. And should they be looking at these ordinance, they should be looking at the fiscal policies and maybe one, just two or three commissioners who work with marketing, who work with Joel and um. I'm sorry, I forget his name again, but um, Chris, thank you, on all of the the marketing and helping the marketing team understand. Because they struggled with that for about two months and I just think a subcommittee.
Great.
Very much.
Thank you very much for applying and.
Okay, sir.
Thank you, thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
I wanted to mention one thing to council, which I've been doing at the beginning, we currently have two alternates on Measure J. Who have applied to be regular members, we didn't ask them to come back for interviews. So we could move them to, what?
We did.
We did not, we were interviewed, they were just appointed last year.
Clifford Hopkins.
Clifford in January, so we could elect to move them to their full-time and hire two alternates.
Brenda, in the past, we've had input more information about, I'm so sorry, hello, welcome. Um, like the district number for the current board member, things like that, if possible, they get more demographic information.
Absolutely.
Hi, Janice, hi, I am Mayor Jeffrey Bernstein, Mayor Potemron DeHart, Council Member Grace Garner, Christie Holstage and uh Lisa Middleton. So just to fill you in, these are quick ten-minute interviews for the Measure J Oversight Commission. Um, we have currently, uh, I think, three openings on the commission and we've got a lot of applicants, so um.
I'm in the existing.
So. Uh, yeah, so this will be sort of short and sweet, so um, but we'll each get a chance to ask questions and you can talk to us. So tell us, um, why do you want to be on Measure J and why do you think you're an asset to the commission?
Uh, maybe I can just give a little bit of intro of an introduction, uh, my name is Janice Shown, I am a first-generation Korean-American. Born and raised in Chicago, went to university and worked in Washington D C and have been in California for the last ten years working and my MBA. Um, I, most of my professional experience has been at tech firms like Cisco, Airbnb, and most recently a financial tech startup called Carda. And I've been mostly in uh strategy and operations and program management capacities there, so what that really means is. I've uh extensive background in managing diverse stakeholders, managing complex projects. And ensuring alignment for organizational goals. And I think a lot of that has also been complemented by my MBA at Berkeley. Uh, working in financial analysis as well as learning and honing some leadership and communication skills. Um, my public service interest really stems from a college at Georgetown where I was also lucky to be able to intern for the White House and the U F N it. Um, and, you know, why I'm here today, actually, is because a lot of my political role models have always said that. The most impact to the average citizen really happens at the local level, so I'm really interested in getting involved um here in Palm Springs. Uh, regarding Measure J, maybe I can address that. I think Measure J is really important, uh, so it's been really interesting to me for three main reasons. One is my understanding of Measure J funds affect and just kind of the nascent um sort of. Impact of Measure J has been, it affects all of the city budget, so it's not specific to any project or. Any um kind of area in how the city uses it, so I think that requires a lot of discretion and also like learning about how the city works and what is important to the city. Um, so having that big picture view, but also understanding how that impact happens at like individual levels. Uh, second reason why I think Measure J is really interesting to me is. I think Palm Springs is very unique in how it balances community, serving the community as well as really appealing and staying appealing to tourists and tourism. Um, I find that balance to be a really hard, delicate balance, rather. I've traveled a lot, I've been to a lot of like the resort towns and all of this, but I really feel like Palm Springs is special because it does this really well. Um, and I think Measure J is like a great place to learn about how that balance is kind of struck because um. Yeah, I can't do Measure J without both the tourist and the community. Thirdly, I think why Measure J is really interesting to me is because there's. Um, kind of related to that second point, there's a really interesting set of stakeholders to manage. One is obviously city council, who makes the final decisions for Measure J funds. Um, and, you know, use the commission being sort of the advisory and like learning body, rather. Uh, to kind of recommend or provide insight for city council. Second is obviously the local community, because this is a voter-initiated. It's very interesting to understand, it, well, you have to learn and really have practice empathy to understand what. Uh, community members here really want to do or would prioritize with these funds, and third. Is obviously the tourist, the revenue comes from, so really kind of um being able to manage all those stakeholders and their interests. Is sort of an interest, uh, interesting kind of learning opportunity for me.
Yeah. Ron?
What uh, what are the uh areas that you would prioritize and advocate for uh sitting on Measure J?
Yeah, I think um, so specifically for funds. I I think I'm still in a place where I would like to learn, like what is being uh sort of proposed by the community initiated projects. Because really, those are the folks, I think, who have a lot more insight, I'm in a place where I still want to learn and kind of understand what is kind of top of mind for the community, so. I would like to kind of, um, I'm still kind of in the learning process, so I don't have strong opinions on where I would sort of recommend yet.
Yeah, that's fair, thank you.
Grace, Kristen?
Uh, hi, Jen, my question is, what, what are the particular skills or insights that you think you would bring to the Measure J commission that isn't necessarily there already? Yeah, I mean, just in sort of my um uh couch, like you, like a couch watching of the um. Uh, how the board meetings are run, I find them really fascinating, there's so much engagement and obviously a lot of learning of what is happening in the community um in the YouTube videos that I'm watching. Um, one thing that I find kind of as a repeated. Not problem, but like question is uh sort of the status and like. Uh, clarifying statuses of where projects are and also scope creep, I would call it, so. It seems to be uh those two things would sort of come to mind when I think of Measure J and what can be improved. And I would uh sort of focus more on like how we can um. Better define some of the scopes or timelines so that we can mitigate running over budget for the certain projects, because that also seems to be sort of an output of those challenges. Could you speak a little bit um to, you you talked a little bit about the balance, um, but could you speak a little bit to the role of the Measure J commission as an oversight body and what skills you would bring to that? Yeah, um. I think. As an oversight body, it's really important to understand what, like, really learn about all these different projects, right? Um, and, you know, not to like necessarily audit, but how do we sort of, because I think. My understanding of Measure J is it's not like people check in like super regularly for the projects, but there is some sort of accountability that's needed. In terms of my skill set, I think what could be interesting is I have a lot of experience um. Managing these complex projects and programs at um. Uh, a tech company, so a lot of that entails like finding the projects, scoping and using and having all the stakeholders at a table to really understand how to do that. But at the end of the game, we also need to make sure we have like the metrics and like the way ways we're going to measure success for a project or program, so I think. That experience I have at the tech companies doing this, maybe I can bring that too in terms of like recommendations or. Questions uh as we uh sort of explore what projects would be um initiated here, thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah.
Anything else you want to tell us?
Uh, you know, just one kind of procedural thing I was wondering is um. Is like, I think, you know, something like a conbon board would be super helpful when we talk, when uh the meetings are happening, I noticed that there's like a list of projects and. You know, it's like project one, project two, they're like referencing referencing that, but I think, you know, bringing in some like technology tools like. Simple like conbon board where we can visually see what the status of like, is it started, is it in progress, is it finished? That might be kind of helpful, so just as like a potential recommendation I might um pose to uh the meetings at least.
Right? I like that, I didn't.
If that's not like overstepping.
I like that too.
Really like the suggestion, we want that too.
Yeah.
There's no such simple technology.
Well, that's what we're getting at. Okay, Jess, thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure. Thank you.
Uh, next we have, so these other people who applied who are not scheduled, they just, they couldn't make it on their.
Either couldn't make it on their calendar or didn't respond, you know, we reached out, email, call.
Okay.
Everything's done, all right.
And just to be clear, so I know you gave us the district number for the applicants, but I don't have the district number for the current commission.
Current commission, okay. Okay. Okay, we'll take care of it.
Jason, how are you? Jason, how are you?
Well, it's a full city council. Nerves are really coming in now.
Don't be nervous. We have three commissions that require all of council as a meeting and we have the rest of. So just so you know, this will be a very quick ten minute, uh, interview. We have a lot to cover today. Uh, we currently on Measure J, there's three openings. We have a couple of alternates in full time. Um, I am Mayor Potem, Mayor Jeffrey Bernstein, Mayor Potem Ron DeHart, Councilmember Grace Garner, Kristi Holstich, and Lisa Middleton. Um, so my first question is why do you want to serve and what's your understanding of Measure J Commission?
Wow, uh, well, first off, I want to serve because, you know, I am a resident here. I have been for many years. And I retired from law enforcement and I got into working on the city side of things. So I want to obviously give back and I feel that I have a lot of background in this kind of work because the city that I worked in, I also served as the liaison for some of these committees. So I know that angle of things. And then also the city that I worked in had a sales tax initiative that was on our TOT tax. And we did the same sort of programs for, but it was mainly for public safety.
You were a police chief at my time?
You know, yeah, what happened was I retired as a captain, then that COVID bug hit. And they called me back and they said, hey, do you want to come back for a little bit? Cause the governor did away with the nine sixty hours. Right? Yeah, it's a, it's a rough town to be a police chief.
Yeah.
What is the, uh, or, or what, um, what are the priorities that you want to advocate for on Measure J?
Well, I'm a visual kind of person, so I, I do love the things that I, you know, when I pull into town that I see like, recently you're going to be doing all the roads and I see, I went to Sherman's last night and I saw a couple of roads torn up. So I love that part of the visual aspect of things, but then there's the things you can't see that are going on. Like, you know, recently when you finally, um, connected the sewer lines for those homes and also non-visual things. But then you sit back as a resident going, oh my gosh, in an urban area, there were still some residents not connected to the city sewer lines. So, you know, there, you got to balance the two of them and also keep in mind the priorities of the community and yourselves also. Cause we're just a recommending authority to the council.
Could you speak a little bit about your understanding of Measure J as an oversight body and what its role should be? It's kind of morphed a little bit from true oversight. You know, they also make recommendations. City council ultimately decides. Um, and that balance, like you said, between like community initiated projects and staff recommendation.
I, I so know where that question is coming from because I've watched your last few council meetings. You know, it, it's tough, especially when the staff lays on to these committees, because they get together, um, and they, if I can morph into something real fast, I, I, we had an HIV advisory committee in Laguna Beach. And they wanted to take political stances on a lot of issues and use city letterhead to send out things. So I have to, you know, politely steer them away from that, but also keep the council informed of what was going on via the city manager. Um, now I see in Palm Springs, the same issues. It's, we're an advisory committee. We basically triage things that would come through the committee first before they go to council. But just because the committee is recommended and it goes to council doesn't mean that it's rubber stamped and approved. Because if I know anything about the five of you, you do ask questions about things coming before you.
Thank you. So you staffed a commission in your role at Laguna Beach?
I did. I was on the parking, traffic and safety committee. We, uh, we had a body that would look at speed bumps and stop signs and speed limits. Also the HIV advisory committee and then, uh, also on a third committee for TOT transient, uh, tax. We taxed two percent, hotel tax.
Is that similar or different to the Measure J Commission?
Well, your sales tax, um, we're, uh, TOT, uh, but you know, it's weird, even though that's at the beach and this in the desert, the cities are so similar.
Yeah.
We tracked, uh, Laguna Beach, uh, six million visitors a year. And once again, the TOT tax was something that the voters weren't, you know, so against because it didn't affect them as much. It was the visitors and the visitors really impacted our city during the summer months. So, you know, they were the ones that drained a lot of our resources. So we felt that giving them the additional tax wouldn't hurt.
Thank you. In your opinion, what are the things that you would be bringing to the commission that it needs or that you perceive it, it needs to add? That you, you would add, sorry.
Well, as far as adding, I, I think you've got a great commission now. I, I have nothing to say against the commission. I'm just at a point that, uh, I'd like to serve. And when I looked at the commission openings, I thought that one was the one that kind of best fit me. You would think probably more of the, the one that deals with the, uh, the citations issue to the, the Airbnb owners and things. Yes, I have a background in that. But, you know, that to me seemed more law enforcement oriented than Measure J would be. And, uh, I was trying to back out of that.
Thank you. Thirty-five years isn't enough for you? Forty?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, Jay Seid. You've had incredible government experience, hands-on doing the work. Uh, and now you're looking at moving into what's an oversight, uh, role. So talk to us about how you think that will be different for you and how you'll bring, uh, your expertise, uh, to there, but not try to tell folks how to do, how we usually do it, uh, twenty years ago in Long Beach and Laguna.
Well, it is, is the five of you, you know, it's all about getting along. You can have different opinions on these. Let people voice their opinions. At the end of the day, walk out of the room, you know, unify that you had your say, that you came to an agreement, uh, don't disparage each other, uh, follow the direction that council gives. I mean, they, they develop policy, you follow policy, but then also you got to deal with city staff. City staff has constraints and, uh, that's obviously the side that I know very well. And, um, you know, I know as a member of the committee, you don't want to put undue burden on the city staff because frankly, they probably don't have a lot of time to look at projects, so, do things outside the scope.
Right. Any other questions? Anything else you want to tell us or ask us?
Uh, well, besides pick me, um, no, I, I, um, I would be very, um, appreciative to serve on the H committee and I, I just appreciate you meeting with me today and making it to this point.
Thank you. Well, thanks so much for coming in.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Thanks for your service.
Thanks.
Thank you. We still have five more people for Measure J. Did we want to discuss the start sake? We finished all of those.
I would like to.
Yeah.
Yep.
I have three minutes, but.
What?
We have about two minutes.
No.
Since then, I have the next one scheduled for ten ten.
Oh, you, there's no break really?
No, your break is, your break is at eleven twenty.
Oh, you fixed the holes in the schedule?
Yeah, we just fixed the holes and moved everybody up.
We have a ten fifty to eleven.
Yes.
Okay.
There's a break.
I guess we can talk.
We can talk about it then or here in the labor.
Or you can do it at eight, seven, twenty.
I mean, we, I, I don't know. Personally, I thought one person really stood out.
Who do you think?
Catherine. She's amazing.
Who do you think? Oh, you weren't here?
I wasn't here. I'm not going to throw on since it wouldn't be fair.
Well, I like that based on the application on that.
Perfect. Okay. Does staff have a recommendation? Usually we like to listen to the staff. Sometimes we have the chair of the commission here offer to participate.
She's, she's leaving this year, so. We invited her.
Oh, for historic preservation.
Historic preservation, we're on now.
Do you have any input for us before we? Sorry to make it into a thing.
You sent over some feedback today.
You do all the hard work. I haven't seen it yet either.
So I will send it forward to you.
Thank you.
Um, I, I, I think, um, one of the big things that I was looking for especially was just, um, being familiar with our processes and knowing kind of the objectives. Um, and so I think there were two that stood out, um, and, um, both Kermit and Catherine, um, have demonstrated the experience as well as the relevant background. I think Catherine's enthusiasm was good to see, but also, um, I think she has a very pointed point in bringing in a very specific, um, demographic and idea that was, um, encouraging. I think that's a lot and it's perspective that we would like to solicit, um, the board and some of those that are, um, important factors in looking at her application. Um, and it also was very apparent in her application that she was motivated to learn and to kind of pick up and read and understand where we're coming from. So that's encouraging. Um, for Kermit, his background, um, is helpful and also his understanding of, um, board duties is, is also one that's helpful as well. Especially when we're making decisions and having pretty in-depth discussions and experiences of having that background and understanding the objective and the goal is helpful for a productive meeting.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Kermit was definitely great.
He's like, I've, I've, for all candidates.
Yeah, I kind of is really good.
Yeah, I like Jack as well.
I am. Yeah, I really, I really liked Catherine's for all the reasons that Sarah just mentioned, but, um, I really liked her comment about perfect preservation versus good preservation. But I also think I found it relevant to all of these discussions because I think, um, as we've seen, right, we just lost a commissioner. Um, and the planning commission is, is one great example of, um, people who are much older and we don't have anyone younger. I think historic preservation, she's, she was right in saying, mentioning her youth. We tend to not have a lot of young people interested and I think this is a really good opportunity to bring in somebody who's enthusiastic and younger and might attract others. Cause we do, I am very worried that we're not going to have, uh,
A new pool.
A new, a good pool of candidates in the future if we don't start to bring in younger folks to get interested and evolved.
I agree. Do you have anything else to add?
Yeah, for people that may be watching this, I, I certainly don't, I want to point out, uh, Catherine's skills and leadership that she would, she's bringing to the table. And, um, and, and not look at, necessarily look at the age of all the candidates that came in. Not the only thing. We had, yeah, we had some really good, um, qualities coming from, um, um, a, a number of the candidates. Um, but I too, uh, out, out of Kermit, who I would love to see because he's district three, um, Catherine, uh, would be, uh, would be my favorite.
Yeah, they, I mean, they're all great. I wish we had more openings. I mean, there was nobody, you know.
And we, I'm sorry.
No, I'm just saying we should have, I wish we had more because, and we would, we are going to encourage people to apply next year. Or if we end up having another opening, because I think we do have, um, potentially two openings next year.
Right, we, well, they're both trimming out next year.
Yeah.
So we will have two openings.
So we have both. And any two who do not get picked today, we would definitely want to apply next year.
We can't appoint them now for next year?
No, well, because we don't know if they'll be interested next year.
Kermit will be interested.
I think we should let them know that we have two, two, uh, we'll have two, at least two openings next year. And, uh, we would like, very much like them to reapply.
Yeah, I will say we have, uh, the last council, we did appoint someone to immediately jump in because there was somebody that had an odd term. And so that was like two months later, we would have had to do the whole process over again. So I think when it's a short time span, it makes sense to just put someone in, but a year is a long time. Things change.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll just say, um, you know, I thought a lot about the historic site preservation board and making sure we have diversity of thought on our commissions is really important. I forget if it's planning commission or HSPB, but some actually specify like having a developer, having a preservationist, uh, you know, having an architect, like planning has that and I've, I'm lobbying the council because I'm leaving. But I've thought a lot about that for historic site preservation board as well, like ensuring you're having diversity of thought. I think Kermit is a strong ca- candidate. Um, but we also already have people with sort of his background and experience and connection to modernism and, um, you know, preservation foundation. And so I think it's nice to have Catherine, who's a different, um, voice that we don't currently have on the commission. And she's involved and has the appropriate experience.
Yeah. Okay, so we are going to go, uh, I have Catherine. Well, Catherine, um, but again, make sure, please encourage the other two people next year that will open.
Yeah, they will. All of the applicants were very, very strong.
Absolutely. Great applicants.
Okay, so now we're going to continue with our Measure J, um, interviews.
I don't know why we can't appoint with a stern start date of next year.
For the two?
Sure.
It's, we've, the thing is, a lot of.
We'll have a different council and we also may have new applicants next year and they might not be interested in. You know, we, I think we probably have to do it next year.
Yes.
Right? Yes, absolutely.
Could we be parents with the new kids?
I know, but, but if we could say that about every action the council is taking down, so, uh, I just color outside of the box sometimes.
We'll, we'll stand on test.
I know.
Time here. Yeah, I got the timer.
Family?
Kennedy, Mr. Kennedy.
Oh, Mr. Kennedy, sorry. John?
Yes.
Hi, I am Mayor Jeffrey Bernstein, Mayor Potem Ron DeHart, uh, councilmembers Grace Garner, Kristi Holstich, Lisa Middleton. Uh, this is for the Measure J Oversight Commission. These are very short ten minute interviews, just so you know, because we have a whole lot of interviews we're doing today. Um, so we're going to ask you a few questions, allow you us to, allow us to tell you about ourselves and then we'll go from there. Um, so first of all, what's your understanding of the commission and why do you want to serve?
Well, I like to serve in order to be able to review proposals that come by or that are proposed to the commission to review them for integrity, financial integrity, specifics, intention, and whether or not they can be funded outside the funds of Measure J.
Right?
What is the committee not doing right? Or commission?
Probably, in my opinion, it's not advertising its accomplishments. My impression that citizens of Palm Springs know they pay the tax, but don't know exactly what they're getting. They don't know that certain roads they drive on, that all of a sudden they're in better condition today than they were two years ago or three years ago. A result of Measure J and the people don't know that. I don't know who's paying, you know, the state's probably still paying for it. And that's one of the reasons we have Measure J.
What's your understanding about the role of Measure J as an oversight commission? And it also makes recommendations to city council. It goes through a community process, um, for community initiated projects. So, um, so one, what's your role? What's your view of the role of Measure J as oversight? And then two, how do you balance between community needs and community requests and staff and other city needs for Measure J?
The, uh, the purpose as I see it is to review and encourage submissions by the various parties that get involved, namely agencies and individuals. And to review those in a, in a, in a way that is objective, um, apparently legal, although I'm not a lawyer. And probably that cannot be funded other than by Measure J. And that, and that these projects, uh, and once they're funded, they don't require a lot of additional attention or money. That's the way I see the, uh, position.
Thank you.
Right? Well, face?
Sure. Uh, what, what do you think you bring, what do you think you'll bring to the commission that maybe you are not seeing on the commission right now? In terms of your skills or?
I think I, uh, I bring a lot of experience. Probably more years than I want to tell you about. Uh, and I've had a lot of management experience, having been in chief executive positions for the last thirty, forty years. So I, I understand how to manage, what's expected of management. And to the extent that politics may influence or not influence decisions that are, that are made by the commission to the. That are made by the commission to the city council.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions?
So as the CEO of the commercial bank, what made for a good board member? Who uh helped you to a task appropriately and someone who is just interfering with getting the work done?
Probably the best. Notion that I had of a, of a uh. Good board member was or is that. They understand. The function, in in my case, they understand what a bank does, what it doesn't do. And not to, not to make assumptions because they run their own business if they know how to run a bank. So um, that's what I, that's what I look for, people who could, who could make suggestions that were. Appropriate and uh in a business manner.
What? Is there anything else you want to tell us that we didn't ask with it, your questions?
No, no, I'm, I'm interested in serving. I lived, I've lived in Palm Springs, as you probably know, for a long time. Since.
In the best district of the city, I might add.
So I take it you live there too?
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. So I said these are short and sweet and you'll hear from us. We don't, we have a limited number of, we only have three openings on this, on this commission. Uh, we are gonna have two more, I think, next year also, so um, we'll go from there.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
So we do actually have ten minutes because Stanley's not coming.
Is Stanley not coming?
That says, yeah, I'm looking at the bottom now. He has, he had a conflict.
Yeah.
Um, so now we're going to.
Are you looking?
I don't know, okay. Yeah. Um, so next we have Larry's here. Larry's here.
If he's here, then.
Larry's here.
Then.
Stanley, I'm sure. Stanley. I'm sure.
Hello, Larry.
Good morning.
Hello.
Hello.
How are you?
I'm good.
Good. I'm Mayor Jeffrey Bernstein, Mayor of Port town Rhonda Hart, and council members Grace Garner, Kristi Holstage, and Lisa Middleton. Um, so this is for the uh Measure J Oversight Commission. These are gonna be very short ten minute interviews. We have a whole lot to go through today, but we've all read your application. Um, so tell us, what's your understanding of Measure J and why do you want to serve on it?
Well, I, I think you've seen my application and my background, which as you know, has. My entire career was in public service, either in the state government sector or in um higher education. And as a CEO of a university system and a uh. Another nonprofit um higher education organization. My entire career has been preparing budgets, analyzing budgets, uh monitoring budgets, both operational and capital. And because of that, and um along the way here, I talked to Peter Sipkins. Who I knew from Minneapolis, we moved here six years ago, uh, my wife and I. And um. I talked to him about the commission. I knew he was on it and, you know, after. Understanding a little better what you do in terms of allocating funds for projects uh from the uh. From the sales tax revenue that comes in, um, I really, you know, became interested in what you're doing. I really like to focus the way this commission is is established and its focus on um. Not huge, huge, huge proj- projects, but helping out. I think five hundred thousand is the maximum that I read. I don't know if that's correct or not, that that the commission allocates. So it can help a great number of projects. Both in terms of capital costs and then just helping out in terms of some organizations. One of the things I noted was a. Grant to the Boys and Girls Club. My wife serves on the Board of Directors there, so uh, thank you for that. She said to thank you for that, by the way. Um, and so you, you affect transportation, you impact uh tourism. You impact business, uh, public works, all of those things and the manner in which it's done. Through this commission recommending to the council, um, I just think it's. It's just up my alley and what you do really impresses me.
Right, right. Have you been to any of the meetings?
No, but I, I watched a couple. I think I watched April and then I went the last October when you were. Working on some funds and not you were at that meeting and talked about priorities. And again, as I listened to the priorities and all the work that needs to be done in so many areas. Um, I thought, yes, this is okay.
Right. Oh, Kristen, you're both kidding. Councilman Garner.
Sorry, we've been all day interview.
Yeah, yeah.
We, you mentioned in your application that uh. That you think your background would would benefit the discussions and if you just wanted you to elaborate more on, on that.
Just say that again.
In your application, you mentioned that your background would benefit the discussions that Measure J would having. So if you can just elaborate a little bit about. Why do you think that?
Well, I, I started in public budgeting in nineteen seventy four when I worked for a legislature as a. As an assistant budget analyst. Um, and then I uh, for a period of time, I was uh. The chief budget officer for the state of North Dakota. That's where we grew up and went to school, et cetera. And then I moved into the higher education sector where I was uh. The vice chancellor for administrative and student affairs for ten years, and then I became chancellor. So. In all of those things, um, budgeting was very, very key, of course, and you get involved in how do you analyze budget? How do you really understand what people are saying about budgets and uh? So that's why I think uh that background could benefit what you do. It's not just about the numbers. It, it's really what's behind the numbers and what you analyze and the way it's presented and how it's presented. Um, that can help lead you to a decision.
Thank you.
Great.
How do you, um, how do you see, I think we answered this a little bit, but. Um, how do you see the role of the Measure J Commission as an oversight body? They also do make recommendations for community projects. They oversee that process with staff and make them. Recommendations to city council. Um, so that's my first question. How do you over, how do you see that role?
Well, you're one of nine, so uh, the role is in a. The, the manner in which you approach it, of course, has to be in a very collaborative way because there are going to be people who have different. Ideas about what should be done or not be done, and you have to approach that with a very open mind. And again, I, you know, I spent my career doing that kind of thing. I think I could bring some benefit just in approach uh and so forth and so on. And of course. Uh, civility, you know, nowadays, that's a pretty big word out there and uh. You know, anything we can do to that in, in that regard is, is very important. Um. Uh, there was one other point I was gonna make, I'll, I may think about it, but go ahead.
And then feel free to add it and then how do you balance between like community needs and community interests versus. Your staff request to Measure J or recommendations and, you know, all the, how do we, how do you pick among those projects?
Yes. Well, I've been on both sides of that. I've been staff and I've also been making decisions, so uh, staff is. Very important. And the professionals that look at these things, engineers um and others. Uh, they're very important to the process, but in the end, you have to make that recommendation as a commission. And uh, I think the important thing is asking the right questions at the right time. Um, and you know, for the first year or so, it's, it will be a learning process. Um, I'm not bringing anything special to the table that I know everything you're doing and how you're doing it. So, you know, the first years and maybe beyond is al- it's always a learning process. And uh, so that, that's how I would approach that, uh, contribute where I can initially, but uh. Lot of listening.
Thank you.
Great.
So Larry, what um, other than the Boys and Girls Club? Uh, what would you, what are the key things you want to advocate for on Measure J? It's a good thing you said something because this is recorded and your wife would have gone and found out if you didn't. So, you're not gonna be.
Yeah, I don't have any special interests. All I know is, is that you fund very important projects from the lists I've looked at in the past and listening to the commission meetings. You spent a lot of time talking about uh the airport. You spend, you did, I know, especially in the huge um investment needed there. Um. I think it's important, you know, when I. When I was in higher education, I always said students first. And when I look at this, I was thinking about, well, how would you match that up? And I, you know, to me, it's residents first. Public safety, health, uh, transportation needs. Uh, all of those things, but approaching it from what will benefit residents, either directly or indirectly. It may benefit them directly. Might be indirectly if it's a tourism project or something that'll bring in more tourism and. Revenue to the city and so forth and so on. So uh, no special interests uh in key. Uh, things at all. Uh, I'm approaching this, you know, very open minded with a lot to learn.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Has Peter Sipkins endorsed you for your application or are you enemies from back in the day?
Um. Well, we've known each other several years. We actually got to know him through our son, who, by the way, uh, we moved here, um, not quite six years ago and in twenty twenty. Our son and husband from L A moved here, so we've rooted down uh pretty good here as a family.
Very nice.
Yeah.
That's great. Okay, well terrific. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you for your time and. And thank you for uh all you do. These are not the. The easiest jobs.
Thank you for lending your experience.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much.
Bye bye.
Can we take a, are you open?
Yes.
Be right after.
Yeah, we're actually. Yep, you're ahead, you're ahead. The, we had one, another. Michael's not there?
Michael is, Michael's here.
We can see her, yeah, he's here. I know, I was talking about the Stanley. He had a medical um conflict and he didn't want to reschedule, so.
We're giving accommodations to people or people who were.
Yeah, yeah, we're moved up. We had one this morning that had a medical procedure this evening, so we moved it up. So we did, yeah, we, we, we did everything good.
Which is good, at least the they're, you're not getting anyone second rate. I went to run E and T here and he said, oh, he could be the first kid I could. Hello, girl.
I am uh I'm Mayor Jeffrey Bernstein, Mayor of Port Charlotte, and we've got council members Bryce Garner, Kristy Goldstich, and Lisa Middleton. Um so this is for the Commissioner on Measure J Oversight Commission. This is a short ten minute interview, so we're going through a whole, all bunch of commissions today and a lot of applicants. So tell us, what's your understanding of Measure J and why do you think you should be on it?
Well, Measure J, which I voted for, is a twenty five year period, which is a one percent sales tax to the ad. That's for city services specifically. So we've spent it, all of us, on roads, which we see all the time, and the bike lanes, which I love. A lot of other public projects that have been all throughout the city that have been proved all of our lives. That's what I understand.
And why do you want to be on the commission?
Well, I've been here now for eighteen years and I love all the people a lot. But I hear a lot of voices, especially locals now where skepticism has turned into sort of distrust. And I don't operate that way. I have an open mind, I know the city real well, I've worked in the city for a long time and it's not that I see any particular need that no one else sees, but I have the kind of mind that listens and hears what needs to be done and evaluates.
What are the top uh priorities that you're gonna bring to the table and wanna advocate for?
Well, I'm not sure if my position is to advocate, really. I mean, as I understand it, the community kind of advocates for what they want. They bring their ideas to the committees and the committees listen to them and evaluate. We say, yeah, that's a great idea, that's what your neighborhood needs, or that's the thing that's been lacking. I don't think that I'm smart enough, honestly, to tell people what they want. I, you know, as, as I say, I love this town, but I don't think that I'm the kind of person who'd say I'm the one who's in charge of saying who gets what or how much, well then, that's something that you evaluate based on the evidence that you have.
But your view of the role of the commission as an oversight commission, it also makes recommendations, you know, oversees the um community projects, community initiated products, and makes recommendations to councils. So what's your view of the role?
Well, the role has a lot of different things, and some of them are wonderful, fantastic things, a celebratory part, where you say, look at what we've done. And you show the public, this is how the money is being spent. But also part of it is that you're on guard about how the money is being spent, who the money is being spent for. And if there are strange relationships that need to be sorted out and everything is clear to the public. But I think it's, part of it is saying that you're a booster for what Measure J can do, and part of it is also saying you're a skeptic. And that you're there to kind of say, I'm overseeing how things are, making sure that things are proper. Things are done right.
Do you have recommendations about what the commission can improve?
Well, I think it's actually a pretty good commission, at least during the time that I've lived here. There's always been really open communication about what Measure J money is for. I know with uh the Plaza Theater, it came out of nowhere, a lot of it. And it took a little bit of time, I think, for people in town to go, well, wait a minute. This is actually a resource that fits within the realm of what Measure J is supposed to do. Things like that, where you're saying we're gonna spend some money and here's why, or we're gonna spend some money and it's because of the need that's come up. It's, part of it is responding to what happens like that, and part of it is also always making sure that people understand where money is being spent and why.
Great. And and you understand, um Michael, my question, how the whole process works with Measure J over the year with approving the projects and going to the recommendations?
I'm not exactly clear on how many committee meetings are actually in the books on schedule, but I know that it's part of an organized set agenda that happens.
Yeah. It's a monthly meeting, I'm not actually sure what day it meets, but it is. It's a public meeting in person, there's no Zoom anymore. Um so yeah, that that is part of the commitment. You have no problem issue with the time commitment? Okay, all right, it is dense.
Well, my teacher said, you know, you can't, you can't always count on your fingers, you can't, you're not always gonna have a computer with you and they're, they were wrong. We always have computers to do the math for us and calculators on our phone, so appreciate that. Um, I'm stealing council member Garner's question, um but what sets you apart from, do you think, the people serving on the commission or the other applicants, what special, unique abilities will you bring to the commission?
Oh boy. Nothing. I'm the third son of nine kids. We're all sort of special, but we're all equal. And I think one of the things that I bring to the council is the fact, or to the committee would be the fact that I'm not walking around covered with gold leaf. I don't think that I'm special. I've lived here for eighteen years and I've worked here, it isn't, you know. I know all the different varieties of people in town, the retirees and the people with kids, or the people who are here sometimes with their kids, or the people here seasonally. And that's a whole lot of variety, and that's a whole lot of special people. Those are all really cool, interesting people. Just to be one of them and the average among them is pretty cool. In terms of what I bring to it, I'm guileless. I'm open minded, I don't expect the worst. I don't expect that government is cheating us out of something, whatever that is that they vaguely are angry about. No, I'm not, that's the thing.
Thank you.
Great, and is there anything else you want to tell us that we didn't have?
I'm dressed in my work shirt, and I'm really glad because I didn't know there were gonna be so many pastels at the table.
Thank you so much for coming, I really appreciate it. Thank you for applying and willing to serve.
Thank you.
Shall we, yes, we should just do it, yeah?
Uh yeah, cause then we're finished. What?
I had it all down and my refrigerator went out and you don't think of that and trying to get neighbors. Don't worry, and I totally blanked.
Do you understand?
That's why I'm attached.
We're all fairly fashionable today.
We're being with the other guys.
Thank you all.
Mayor Gray's wearing sneakers.
Yes, I am.
Aiden only calls you Mayor Gray, so.
I appreciate that. We're missing Jeffrey.
We're missing the actual mayor. The mayor.
Oh, I just saw him go into the restroom.
Oh, okay.
You look so familiar.
We've interviewed you before.
I hope so.
We're not even doing the introduction because you know everybody. Um, and these are obviously very quick interviews. You got like 10 minutes.
Yeah.
Um, so you've been on Measure J for six years before?
Yes.
Why do you want to come back?
Because I was on, um, before Measure J, I was on the human rights and I was on Parks and Rec. And I resigned from Parks and Rec when I was the chair because I wanted to be on human right. I wanted to be on, excuse me, on this. And so I, um, I enjoyed the time that I was on it. I think I contributed a lot. And I was thinking about getting back involved and I looked at all of that and I thought, this is where I'd rather be because I think I can, I can contribute the most in that area and that.
Can you, can you tell, expand on, on what it is that you think you can contribute to Measure J specifically?
Um, I found when there's been working on, on budgets and ideas for things in the parks, uh, I, I had come up with some ideas before that helped in the parks. I'm just, I've got to get my mind off of what I've been dealing with this morning. I'm sorry. I helped in a lot of things and I'm, I'm drawing blanks. That's not effective. I'm sorry.
Don't worry, don't worry. You can also come back to it if you want.
What, so what do you think is like, which, um, uh, what things are you like that you've seen when you've not been on Measure J in the last year that you've, that you think is doing well and what things you think it could be a use improvement?
I, I find that it's been, that there, that there's been a lot of good that's been done in, in the last regimes that have been going on and that affected into the city. People are starting to, I think, get more involved in using the parks. I think that the meetings on television have helped. When people watch those, I've talked to neighbors and a few people when I say about watching some of these meetings, uh, I get people saying, yeah, yeah, I have been watching. I just started watching. I've been, somebody mentioned it to me, but thanks, I'll take a look. And I find that's effective for people when they see that there's things that they could be involved in. There's a little bit of a, um, you know, this, 20 years ago, this, this town was, had a different reputation. It was uh, flight words of seniors. Uh, it's not that way anymore. You have people coming from Los Angeles and from San Diego that are, uh, that are younger, much younger. And I think more hip in the sense of wanting to get involved more and it's, uh, newer ideas, better ideas, only it's under the time that I was involved and seeing things being done. Uh, there's better changes now. They're not recycling the old ideas, which used to be the era that I was involved in before. And I like the idea because, um, I'm an idea man. Right? Question?
No.
Juan?
So, um, you've served before on Measure J.
Yes.
And what do, this time around, if you're appointed, what are, what are key focus areas you want to advocate for?
I want to advocate more to get the younger people in town. Give them incentives, why they want to get involved, why they should get involved. Uh, stimulate the ideas of if you got involved, this was your impetus be. Uh, this is a lot, not a lot, I shouldn't use that word, but there's a, there's a group that sort of thinks that is, you know, it's still the same old boys club. And it's not. It's totally, it's, it's, I've lived here full time 15 years and I, I'm 80 and I've been coming here since I'm 16. And I've seen all the changes that go on. But right now, I think that, um, there's a younger group of people and I like to think young in the attitude that, uh, that people are coming up with ideas today that hadn't been prevalent. Uh, trying to expand, getting the public to use the parks more. Uh, we have amazing parks in this city. And if you go around any time of the year when I would go around and I would walk the parks, you didn't always see enough people using it. And I think it was because they didn't know about it. I'd like to see Measure J do a whole campaign more on the Parks and Recreation and getting some type of, some type of events that go on to stimulate, uh, the people coming into town. Why this is a great place to come to.
Mm-hmm. Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
And what do you think about, I mean, do you think there's a general awareness of Measure J and how the funds are used?
No. I don't think so at all. It's not. It, I think if you ask the average person, what is Measure J? They couldn't, they couldn't define it to you. Uh, it's sort of good and bad. I, I say that out of both sides of my mouth from the standpoint that because they don't know that they're receiving the benefits from it. And they don't know. And maybe there's a way of trying to get the, uh, the definition, uh, the mission, the mission of, of, of Measure J out to the public in a way at, at some of the events. And I don't have it off the top of my head, but I think we got to do some brainstorming Measure J on how to get the public awareness more aware of it is because it's the average person, I just don't think, thinks about it.
Mm-hmm.
Yet there are benefits that they're getting and not realizing it.
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, questions? Thanks.
Yeah.
So, I, I'm going to ask some more. So, because when we're looking at, um, some of the projects and obviously parks are a very visible project, but then you have things like fire station and roads that not everybody thinks is so visible. And what do you think is the best balance between sort of visual things that people can experience now like the parks versus long-term?
Well, I would start using more of the, um, the, uh, the show that, um, Patrick Evans was doing, uh, the Eye on, Eye on the Desert. I would try to come up with ideas. I would want the measure to come up with ideas that, uh, we can bring to the public that could stimulate the newspaper more to do articles about what Measure J is doing, getting them to attend these meetings. Uh, which when I was on it before, the audience, I never saw basically, uh, people from the industry, from those media sitting in the audience ever.
Right.
Uh, and try to give them things to simulate them to write about it, to get people to start knowing more of what Measure J can do for them or also getting them involved. And again, we have so many new people moving here. Which is more than ever why we need to stimulate getting them involved.
Right? Is there anything else you want to tell us? We all know you, so.
No, I'd like to, when I get involved in something, I jump in with both feet. Uh, I'm an idea man and I'll think of things during a meeting and I'll write them down and bring it about again and stimulate people. I'm good at, um, getting the right people together to help with situations. I've done that in the past. Uh, I've involved people in the past that way in all the organizations I've been involved in. Uh, I feel good about the time I put in on Parks and Recreation. I feel good about when I was involved in the Human Rights Commission. That, uh, I see things that I brought about, which is a little bit of my ego, that I see things that are being handled based on some things that I said in the past. And yeah, yeah, that's ego.
It's also the best feeling in the world to get things done for the community.
I think you may have the record for the most time on, on commissions of anyone. If you serve double time on three different commissions?
Yes.
Yes, I would say so. All right, well, is there no more questions?
No more questions.
All right, so well, thank you. We know you had a tough day, so thank you.
I'm sorry, everybody. My apologies, et cetera.
Don't worry about it. Thank you for coming in. Okay.
Good luck with your refrigerator.
Thanks. Yeah, they're coming tomorrow. Hello.
Um, the food is here. We have a break until 11:35. We can decide Measure J now and then go eat.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
We have staff here.
Um, Chris, uh, do you want to ask? Chris and Ryan first? Um, you've seen the interviews. Let me just, can I just start with one thing as we have Cliff and Jack who are alternates and have applied to move on? Is there a consensus that they should become full-time ones or do you want to wait? No?
Wait.
Okay, so they did not, we did not interview, but they did obviously apply. And then we have three others.
Oh, thank you. I'm not moving well. Yes, thank you.
Well, I, I like, I feel pretty strongly on Clifford moving forward.
Yeah, I agree with Clifford. That's recommendation from staff and
Yeah.
and committee. So I support Clifford moving forward and taking one of the three spots. And the second one that I'm, uh, very strongly support, um, with her, uh, skills and qualification and, uh, vision is Janice.
I agree.
And she has, uh, recommendation from, um, staff also, I think.
I, I think staff, staff and both of them. You are, Chris and Ryan, you are, you're in agreement.
Uh, I'm not on Janice, but I agree with what was just said about Janice. Uh, I guess the first one I've seen, uh, I think Brian did you know?
Yeah.
Uh, I, on, on paper, favorable.
So sorry, can I ask you to come up because we're recording and I want to make sure everything's considered. If you please.
Planning.
I'm trying to sit back there, but public wants to see you, you're a fan.
To finish, I'm going to repeat the comment with, with Janice on paper, a good, I, I view her qualifications and interest favorably. Uh, among the other candidates, I wouldn't necessarily put her in such a high, uh, high position in the hierarchy of options.
What are your, I, we have your email with public records.
Uh, the, the experience live simply reinforced for me what I saw on paper and first and yet starting Clifford, uh, the best candidate and an excellent colleague on the commission. Jack Newby, I think his year spent is a good qualification to bump forward. Uh, he's, he's put his good year in. Uh, and if he were here fresh as a candidate, he would be a good candidate. Uh, Jason, the retired law enforcement, I thought was the best new candidate among the batch. Uh, in person, on paper, and it was just a tremendous background, uh, and a really good balance of perspective. And then, uh, the last one I've mentioned is Larry, a retired educator. Uh, South Dakota. Limited, admittedly limited experience or familiarity with the details of the commission, but a great perspective and professional background for the position. So we're on, uh, and, and the ranking of that, that's, that's my four.
Could you say a little bit about like what experience, what personalities, what background you want, you need on the commission?
Uh, I guess I like the idea of someone who's who doesn't know. Uh, there's a lot of the tyranny of consensus, a lot on, on the body, within the body, uh, and an individual who deals professionally for 30 years with budgeting and financial management, public management and the political layer for Larry. Uh, he understands, I think, understands the good of saying no or saying yes in the context of who we're here for and he recognizes we're here for the residents.
Mm-hmm. I like those comments. What about you, Chris?
Yeah, so I agree on Clifford for sure. Uh, he's a very valuable part of the current commission and would love to see him be part of the voting members. Um, I agree on Jack too. Uh, um, I like, I like Jack as part of the commission. Um, whether he would be voted upward or stay as an alternate, uh, I'm, I'm indifferent on that. Um, I did like Larry. He's a chief budget officer, so I'm a partial to the guy. Uh, I think, you know, I agree with Brian. I do think, you know, both Larry and Janice, who I really liked as well, had a little limited knowledge on, on the Measure J commission. Janice probably a little bit more. Uh, but I think Larry being in public service for so long, I think he would just jump right in and pick it up. So I have no problem with Larry being part of the commission. And Janice, I just like her background, uh, with the, you know, the companies that she's worked for and, uh, you know, what she said about the projects and her tech background, I think would be very interesting to see what she could bring to the table there. Um, and then, uh, so ranking then I would say Clifford, uh, I would put Larry as a voting member, uh, Janice and then Jack.
And then, so if we're appointing the three full terms, we can also appoint any alternates that we bumped, right?
And we can have, yeah, we can have, assuming we're keeping Jack and Clifford, they can either stay as alternates or move to full-time and then we have three open positions, either full-time or alternates.
Right.
Um, and again, uh, keep in mind that like Brian leaving and Naomi leaving, Mark leaving, then DeFutter will leave next year and then everyone else on this commission started last year. Okay. So there is.
A need for, is there a need for historical knowledge in the city?
It's a tough ramp up to understand the projects themselves and understand the context of what generated it in the first place. And it's, it's a lot of, a lot of commas and zeros on those, some of those projects and they, the capacity. To get familiar and comfortable with them, uh, with, within 90 minutes every month, it's pretty challenging.
Yeah.
Yeah. It takes a lot of work, research outside.
It does, yeah.
And we've had this before, where people have, and when I was on it, when people showed up and for several did not really know what was going on because it takes a lot of research outside of the actual meeting to see what happened in the past.
I think we can, we can bypass that loss of knowledge in 26 by extending two or three of those people's terms for another year. So we can get into a cycle that, um, is, is not this cycle.
And people like Peter Sipkins know, I mean, they've been around, so they know.
But that's, so it's an easy thing for us to fix. So we're not having that brain drain. Um, uh, by extending three or four, so we get into a, a, a cycle. There's only four replacements a year.
Yeah.
So you want to bump up Clifford and Jack as alternates to full terms, a proposal? And they have three other spots. So that would be, for me, I also agree on Janice, Larry, and I also would pick Jason probably as that third. Those are the staff and mission recommendations. Are those the people we're talking about or do you want other people into the conversation?
Move Clifford uh, from alternate. I would leave Jack as an alternate.
Same here.
Uh, I would move Larry forward as, uh, uh, and I would move, uh, Jason forward and have Janice as a new alternate.
Mm-hmm. I
I like Janice.
I had.
I thought she was strong. I mean, I think she was nervous, but.
I, I had Clifford, Janice and Jason for mine.
That's what I had.
Hmm.
Jason was the, like Jason. Oh no, I had Larry.
Yeah, I actually I had an opposite response.
To whom?
To Larry. I liked him. I liked everybody, but, but I, my, I didn't list him as like, uh, one of my top people.
He was very short in the interview, but his experience being the chancellor overseeing an entire system, I mean, incredible experience being a budgeter, budget officer for legislature, so it's an incredible resume. So from him, like his on paper, I gave more weight to than the interview.
Actually, I, yeah, I liked Jan, I liked. It was, uh, Jason was the one. Jason, Janice. Move up. Jason, Janice, and, um, and Larry is the three new ones, is that right?
No, Clifford, Jason, Janice.
Clifford was, Clifford, I mean, just new ones to add.
That's what we have. Yeah.
So it's Janice, Larry and Jason are the three we're adding.
I'm agreeing.
Overall.
Yes.
And then, but then Clifford should move up. And which one of those, and Jack stays as an alternate?
Jack stays as an alternate, yes.
I agree with that.
And then Clifford to the, so then it's Clifford and then which one of those three, Janice, Larry or Jason is an alternate? You, anyone have any?
I would put Janice as the alternate. I would agree with that.
I would put Jason as the alternate.
Ooh, yeah, that's what I was.
I would too.
Jason, but I didn't pick Jason.
Jason, Jason, Larry and Janice are the three new ones we're adding.
Oh, I put Larry, uh,
Right.
Larry, Clifford and Janice on top and then the bottom. Okay.
Um, if the one thing I have not heard is any other name other than the four of them.
Right.
And we frankly, if you count the alternate, we've got four decisions. So it's just which one of the four is the alternate?
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
You could make a good case frankly for almost anyone, but, uh, uh, that incredible experience that, uh, uh, Jason and Larry had was really convincing, but if we get one of them as an alternate and they're there to come forward the next time we have a permanent, uh, opening, I think that's.
Okay, so let's take a vote. Who want, which of those, if we all agree on Clifford moving up and Jack and Stan as an alternate?
Yeah.
But I did.
Which of the three?
Gender numbers were basically there.
This is one of the most of our not ones.
Right now it's five, right now without anyone, it's five women out of eight. So, yeah.
Yeah.
Even.
So, Janice, Larry, Jason. Which one of those is the alternate, right?
The alternate for me is, is Jason and that was partly, I think, Brian mentioned in your comments, the him, that he's been in city government experience for so long, kind of how will he fit into being a commissioner versus staff? Is that what you have written about him? Was that Jason? Who wrote that? Remind me who this is?
I didn't have any, no, I mean, for Jason.
Oh no, with somebody else.
We're doing Measure J now and then we're going to take a break and then we're going to do planning. So we have some time, just letting.
David, that was David Riley, sorry.
Yeah.
No, um.
Jason is law enforcement.
Yeah, law enforcement. No, I would still do Jason as an alternate.
Ron, who do you pick as the alternate?
Janice.
So, I pick, um, Jason. Who do you pick as the alternate?
Jason.
Well, there we have it. So it's Ja, uh, um, Jason's the alternate, Jack's the alternate. The new appointee is Clifford moves up and then Janice and Larry. I mean, there, there's great, all of these are great. I mean, it's like, it's, this is not you did good. The difficulty is trying to figure out who's where because they're all so good.
They're all great and they're other great people we interviewed and not enough room.
We all are going to ask in terms of institutional knowledge and I don't know how we're going to do this because we've asked every new commissioner to sit down with a chair or someone. So between you and Naomi, it would be good if you all meet with one of, with these, the new people. And Chris maybe too, if you want to do, to give the background so they don't come in blind. This Measure J is a harder one. So, um, Brenda, because I don't know who, I guess they, you're asking me with Naomi? But they should meet with either Naomi or one of the two.
I think normally when the chair turns out, it's usually the liaison.
It should be you.
But Brian and, Brian and Naomi are both turning out. So we're going to have the chair and the new.
I think it would be good for a commissioner to talk to, understand, ask from a commissioner's point of view, challenges all of going.
Right, but I don't think we, just because someone's turning out, doesn't mean they can't meet with the new people and give them guidance on what they see.
So I, as I know, Naomi's not available, one of you two.
Yeah. And I mean, up to you. You don't, you don't have to either.
It's helpful though. Yeah. All right.
And staff is onboarding them to the commission. I know they have the ethics onboarding, but are you like substantively teaching them about the Measure J commission to them?
Okay, I am.
Well, I mean, I'm just happy. It can be with a board member and.
Yeah, I'd be more happy to do that. I absolutely, I have more education we can provide today.
Sure, thank you. Lunch is in the other room.
Thank you.
Uh, 15 minutes? Uh, fifteen minutes. Uh, fifteen minutes.
You probably want a Fed Council. For interviews, not a starving one.
So we have three incumbents. Whoever replied, I don't think any of us want.
Kathy, do you want to be free?
No.
That would leave one position open.
Yes, I would very much like to reappoint the current members. Which is just to, just for clarity, who are Kathy, Scott Miller and Lori.
Okay, great. Yeah, I agree.
So we have one.
Great, Harrison waiting so patiently. Yeah.
We're ready. Lisa.
I'm waiting for Lisa.
You want Lisa?
Have we told Lisa?
Um, I don't know. I don't.
So you live in Lisa's district but work in mine, is that right?
Exactly.
Realize that you were cheating on me with another district. That you were District Four Representative.
You guys did that years ago.
I know. That's right. We moved you.
The block.
That's right. Lisa wanted that block. Blame Lisa.
Brenda, all five, these are one, two, three, four, all six are coming in.
Mm hmm.
Did you see, um, it's trending on Twitter that True Value moved up with like Home Depot and.
Okay. Yeah.
Oh, hi Lisa.
Okay. So we're going to start.
Is she recording?
It's recording.
I'm just going to reiterate for Lisa, we have four openings. We have three incumbents who have all reapplied. Kathy, Lori, Lori and Scott Miller. So we'll have more if we appoint those, we'd have one open. Okay. So Eric, sorry to keep you waiting. That's, um, you know, it's all, um, so there's going to be short interviews. Uh, you know everybody, right?
Yep.
Okay. Yes.
Did you practice your answers from the questions we were asking?
I wrote this down, but I'm just, you know, like, okay. Okay, so, uh, what is your understanding of the planning commission and why do you want to serve?
My understanding of the planning commission is, uh, being part of the growth of, of, of a community that I much, very much live in and, and thrive in. Like many of you have, uh, done a lot of projects through the years and am ready to move forward on the coming years. I have actually done everything in the last year on a previous commission to watch, track other things that are actually going on within, within the city, other projects. Um, I'm very much interested in adding my input. Um, of course, you all know that, uh, this last year, not a years ago, February, I, um, worked on, um, programs called Safe Growth, SEPSA, Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design with the Police Department. I kind of fell in love with that program. Um, it has a lot to do with planning. Uh, I've worked, of course, with Planning Department, Code Enforcement and the Police Department. Um, and we did a lot of research and, uh, that's where I kind of fell in love with, uh, that program. And then it started reminding me of, uh, all the things that I used to do years ago. Right? And I, what I've been applying that to sustainability this last year. Let's, uh, clear up something. The reason why I went ahead and, uh, basically resigned from sustainability was to give Brenda and the crew a chance to actually fill that position now. Because I basically am looking to go into, uh, doing other things, not only just planning commission, but, uh, I needed to refocus. I, um, I love sustainability. You get, the city is luck, very lucky to have those people that are on sustainability. LP is wonderful. Um, I, I don't really want to leave that, but I need to in order to refocus my projects. I'm a pretty busy person, forty hour plus work week, and then you guys all see me at different projects. Away from airport to, uh, theater. And, uh, paying attention to those projects and where they're at, how they, how they're moving forward. Um, I don't, uh, spend a whole lot of time. I wish I did, uh, doing a lot more of, let me say the, looking at the architectural stuff within the city because I, uh, pretty busy. Um, I guess I want to step back to quite a few years ago, uh, when I first moved here. I went to work for a major retailer in town and I ran into Chris Mills. Yes, Chris Mills of Mills Architecture. He and I used to talk a lot. He used to come into the store and we would talk about architecture and then we'd talk about marijuana licenses. Because that was my first part of the city and was actually going in and sat in city council meetings and worked with, uh, I want to say our public in reference to the first marijuana, marijuana licenses that it brought in the town. I can name a few names that you guys already know them, but those people that actually have those licenses still today. Um, and I'm very much connected with those people still. Plus, I worked again with them during the Safe Growth Program. When we did the analysis for, with, I want to say Veronica at Code Enforcement. It was a huge thing for me to be able to do that also with the, the marijuana licenses. From way back when, the what I learned and the part of the growth of the city in reference to all that. And the numbers and things like that, that, that Brenda, not breaking. Veronica sent me, Veronica sent me those numbers and I would like, oh, okay, this is interesting. Okay, so.
Yeah, well, excellent. Good, good, uh, involvement in the community. Appreciate you sharing that, um, overview. Um, what, what, um, technical skills do you feel you bring to the planning commission?
Probably my history and, um, project management. Um, let's see, somebody in this room is probably familiar with the animation industry. I used to work for a large art, visual arts corporation. Um, it was attached to another company called Warner Books. And, uh, I helped build out a gallery in Santa Fe, Mexico. Um, got moved here to Southern California and, uh, in Irvine exactly. And helped build out a gallery, done all the way from, uh, working with the architects, the contractors, the, um, the, the develop, the developers, the, the owners of the buildings. Um, how we would go in and revamp and change things. Um, I was kind of like the project manager for the company. I would actually go down and go, go into the projects, working with the contractors and go and see what they, where they were at and then reporting back. So.
Thank you.
Nice question.
Can you explain a little bit about like the u- unique perspective you would bring to planning?
I think my unique perspective would probably be safe growth. That is my goal. Is to, I've actually, um, uh, like I said, it, it's something that I'm very much interested in. Um, I've actually spoken to also the, it's Safe Growth International about going on and continuing the education. There in Colorado, I know a few days met Greg. Um, but he is actually coming back here next year. He and I have actually spoken multiple times. Plus, um, I don't know if you noticed that next, uh, week, um, at One PS, there's four of us that are actually doing a presentation to all the One PS communities in reference to Safe Growth. Um, I think one of our council members here started One PS. Can't you not? For many years ago, you were on it and I, that's what you were chaired. Okay, that's what it was.
I call her queen of One PS.
Yeah.
Do you have any issues for the time? You know, this planning commission meets twice a month and they're very dense agendas.
Like that.
Takes a lot of time.
It, I'm very aware of that and that was part of the reason why I needed to listen. Well, I don't know if Brenda remembers this, but my first application over a year ago was planning commission. And I put in the application, I think a few days late. So of course she contacted me and said, would you be interested in going sustainability instead? And of course my enthusiasm said yes. Because sustainability is also a part of safe growth. They're still combined. But I have discovered this last year that I need to refocus and, and go in the directions that I had originally planned. And that was, that's my goal.
Right?
Thank you.
Bryce, are there any second questions? Um, is there anything else you want to tell us?
Um, I, I think we pretty much, um, I showed it all down here, but, uh, um, no, I think we're good. I, I appreciate it.
Well, thanks for coming in and good seeing you again.
And you say, our apologies.
Yeah, we'll see you later. And all of you later.
Yes.
It's a small town.
Bound to see us.
Yeah. Thanks, Eric.
Thank you, Eric. Chris, so the ordinance for planning commission specifically states we need certain expertise, right? Like, um, it has positions listed in the ordinance?
No, that's a good review. This one's a little bit more flexibility there.
Okay, so it told me planning earlier.
Okay, where's the hot seat?
Right there.
Hi, how are you?
Grant, hello, everybody. Thanks for waiting. Thanks for waiting. Nice to see you again. I'm Jeffrey Bernstein, Mayor, Department of Mayor Potem, Council Members Grace Garner, Kristi Postage and Lisa Middleton. Um, so these are very quick interviews. I apologize. You just have a lot to get through today and as you see, we're already running late. Um, but tell us a little bit about your understanding of the role of the planning commission and why you think you'd be a good fit.
Okay, well, uh, I worked as a city planner in the Bay Area, San Bruno, for the most part, for about a decade. And so I was, uh, the planning department's, uh, primary contact for the planning commission there. So planning commissioners make land use decisions and if they get appealed, they go to you, City Council. So, um, my interest in the position, uh, is multifaceted. One is that when I was doing that type of work as a city planner, I really liked engaging with the commissioners. And I, I saw myself in that sort of position at one point in the future. Um, also, I was very close to Lynn Callardine, who, I'm not sure all of you knew him, but, uh, he's the reason I'm in Palm Springs. So in two thousand and five, I was looking for a bit of a change. I was living in the lower eight in San Francisco. I would look out the back window. I would see all this green space, uh, that I did not have access to. So I think cities like that are great. Uh, I still have a little bit of the toehold there and, um, but, uh, I had to rely on going to public open spaces rather than having a little piece of turf for myself. So I started looking for positions elsewhere and I focused that effort on Palm Springs and had a couple of job offers here and I went with the one that, uh, was with LSA. So Lynn offered me that position. And, um, so it just, uh, charged me up a little bit, but, um, with his passing, it just seemed like, uh, an appropriate time to make that jump into the world of planning commission.
It wasn't that long ago that he was sitting in that very chair and, uh, going through the same process. So he's channeling you today, I'm sure.
Probably so.
So what, um, a, a couple of questions. Uh, how do you feel about, uh, the hundred thousand square foot plus fulfillment houses, uh, buildings in Northern Palm Springs or the possibility of those going into North Palm Springs?
Uh, interesting question because, uh, shortly before I retired, most of the work I was doing was related to California High Speed Rail. But I was, uh, also principally in charge of some other projects, one of which was a fulfillment center in, uh, the past area. And, um, I think some of those types of developments, uh, are appropriate. Uh, they just need to be designed for, uh, potential changes of use in the future because with us being on the outskirts of the concentration of that type of development, I'm not totally convinced that building a huge facility, uh, at this point is going to be the way that land use is going to be used, uh, in the future, say in twenty years. So I think, uh, you have to be very cautious about, um, those types of uses and never use.
And, and what about residential housing, uh, above two stories? Uh, what's your opinion of, of building higher?
As somebody who lives in a single story neighborhood, uh, I don't particularly care for the idea of somebody being able to look into my backyard. Uh, so in the past, I have worked on projects, uh, uh, from the city planning side where we took neighbor, neighbors' concerns into consideration and, um, placed windows, uh, appropriately so that, uh, you had limited views. I thought about that myself because it would be a nice way to develop additional housing. So not necessarily just a second floor for personal use, but say, uh, granny flat. So maybe put a second story above a garage. Uh, but then, uh, my thought on that is if I were to do that myself, if I had the opportunity, I would put clear story windows around. And I think, uh, that might be an opportunity for future housing in Palm Springs. Uh, but, uh, I think that the design guidelines are critical in that regard. Because people like their privacy and that's why people are helping here.
All right, thank you.
How do we balance that with the housing crisis and what we have to, you know, our, um, twenty two hundred units, twenty four that we have to do? Um, how do we balance growth with, you know, our architecture and design and need for, you know, residents? Um, enjoyment and all those things that we balance.
That's another thing that I, I consider when I just look at my own house. So, uh, I think, all right, if I could do an accessory dwelling unit above the garage, uh, I would want to make it consistent because I, I have a heat capture designed home. And, uh, I would want that to be consistent with the original architectural style. Uh, or if not, make it clear enough that it's different from the original that, uh, I'm not trying to mimic something. So, I mean, there's a whole design vocabulary that goes with that. Uh, and it's very tricky to navigate that, but given that this is a, uh, very architecture oriented city, uh, I'm very sensitive to that. But, uh, more to your point about meeting housing demand. Um, I think it's great that we have the ADU standard set out in the planning department. There are flyers that you can pick up and figure that out. It's not, I think there are complaints about, uh, the permitting process. Uh, but, uh, I've, I'm not building an ADU, but my discussions with the planning and building departments have been very soon in terms of getting a little permits for, for me and stuff like them.
Thank you.
Chris, Lisa have any questions?
I'll ask Lisa's question if I can then. Um, how will you balance being former staff, planning, you know, planning staff? How will you balance that and change in your role as a commissioner and work with our staff?
Um, I'm not totally sure what.
How, how do you take off your staff hat and put on your commission hat? And then work as a member of the body and, you know, work with staff recommendations? How do you switch gears into a commissioner role?
Okay, um, well, I mean, I have been on both sides anyway, so I, I've been, uh, I've been a staff person, but I've also been on the Sustainability Authority Commission. So, um, I wasn't working as a staff person while I was on the Sustainability Authority Commission. So, uh, and, and the Sustainability Commission is very different from the Planning Commission anyway.
Right.
So the Sustainability Commission comes up with concepts and then, um, pushes them forward for planning commission review or city council review. Or we review things that have come from the direction of the city council. I said, it's been, uh, five years since I was turned out. Um, so I, I don't have a problem with that. And then furthermore, as a consultant, I also came from the perspective of, uh, for example, I worked on the last, uh, Airport Master Plan update. And so I gave presentations to the council at that time, uh, related to the environmental aspects. Because I was the environmental project manager. So I, I, I feel like I can navigate that pretty well.
And you've been on our general plan, I missed it, our general plan steering committee, you were saying, yeah.
Uh, I didn't mention that, but yes.
Okay. I was reading it. I was reading it as you were talking. So yes. You did that for five years in the city. Okay.
Yeah, it, it took a while. It took a while.
All right. Is there anything else you want to ask or toss?
I was just kind of curious, uh, for this particular go around, what you might be looking for in a planning commissioner to, uh, complement the skill set of the current commissioners.
We will be having that conversation after we interview. I mean, really, we look for the body. I was just asking like what expertise we have on that commission now. So you can tune in and watch us have that conversation unless anyone has an answer now.
No, I mean, what happens is we're going through this incredible period in Palm Springs. There are huge major projects going on. We have the housing real, uh, uh, crisis in many ways, uh, that we have to balance and we're also running out of land. And so we're sort of having people who understand that right development of our lifestyle with a need for development. And, you know, what's, where we're going in the future, which is not just related Palm Springs, but it's the whole valid in terms of our economy. So it's trying to have somebody who understands that, which you have experienced. So that's, that's a plus. So.
Okay, I appreciate that. Great.
That's why you're mayor and I'm not. Great. Well said, mayor.
Thanks, Grant. Nice to see you.
All right, yes.
And you live in a great district, I thought.
I know.
Thank you so much.
Thanks. It's good to see you all.
Thank you. Um, so next we have John Moore. Your district.
Is your only district three. There's no current district three reps.
What did we just talk to?
But he's the only one.
John Moore.
Hello.
Hello.
Well, sir.
John, have a seat. I am Jeffrey Bernstein, Mayor, Mayor Potem on the heart, Grace Garner, Kristi Postage and Lisa Middleton. Um, we're sorry to keep you waiting, you know.
It's all right.
We have a lot of interviews. That's why they're all kind of short. So they're ten minutes. Um, so, uh, we'll do this quickly. We only have one, uh, potential opening. We have four openings and a planning commission, but three incumbents who have reapplied.
Yeah.
Uh, so there may only be one. So just to keep you posted. Uh, but, uh, tell us a little bit, your understanding of the planning commission and why you think you'd be a good fit.
Um, well, I, my last position was, uh, working with the city of New York. They were my client. And, um, I dealt a lot with city planning and zoning code issues of the city. Um, and going through the process there. And, um, more so from the applicant side, I actually represented the city. Uh, and they would have to go through the same process anyone went through to get their projects approved. So, uh, I'm used to working within, uh, new, within city government and dealing with processes and approvals and, uh, and all the, uh, documentation that goes along with that. Um, uh, as far as, um, I've watched a lot of the recent, uh, uh, as far as um, I've watched a lot of the recent uh, hearings before Palm Springs. I think I've watched all the hearings going back to the beginning of the year. So I'm familiar with the types of projects that are um, coming before the, the board. Uh, I do have areas that I think I could lend assistance in, um, because I have a lot of negotiating experience um, and working with developers and um, uh, one of the things I noticed, well, I've heard a lot about, I haven't been able to read any of your agreements, but one of the things um, is milestones and that was a big issue with the city is milestones and making sure that there's some teeth to those milestones, so that there's, you know, appropriate penalty if they're not completing projects and um, I've noticed a lot of the projects that are coming up are projects that are come up years ago and are now being extended. And um, obviously, I think we'd all prefer that projects were being built and not being delayed. I think I can, I think I can contribute there too, as far as um, contract negotiation goes and um, and I'm also interested in um, in New York, we have eighty-twenty housing, which is twenty percent lower income and eighty percent is market rate with incentives to uh, builders to incorporate that into their development. And I think that's a huge success in New York. I'd love to see it happening here to help with um, housing for lower-income families and um, and the nice thing about it is they're not standalone lower-cost housing, they're, they're mixed in with market rate. So there's really, you can't even tell you know, which units happen to be
Yeah.
uh, lower income. I think that would be a great thing.
Here, that's for sure.
Yeah. There's certainly a need for lower-income housing here.
Yes.
Not everyone can pay a million dollars for a two-bedroom house, it's kind of crazy.
Very true, very true. What, how do you feel about the a hundred thousand square foot, multi-hundred thousand square foot fulfillment houses uh, in North Palm Springs?
Uh, well, I'm familiar with that because I watched the hearing. Um, fulfillment, um, I would support, it's more the distribution ones that aren't employing that many employees and are just generating truck traffic that I have um, more concerns with. And if there's some way to promote uh, landlords to be trying to get distribution and I'm trying to get perfume fulfillment instead of distribution. You know, I'd be all for trying to find a way to bring those businesses in. Whether it's Amazon or some other fulfillment center.
How do, how do you feel about the possible solution or a, a, a way to solve some of the housing shortfalls, affordable housing, uh, building above uh, three stories, above two stories?
Yeah, that's the, well, that's the challenge here because I know you don't, you know, and myself and I'm sure yourselves don't want to promote to, uh, buildings any taller than necessary and interrupting the view corridor. But um, in New York, that's basically how they handle the eighty-twenty rule is they give zoning bonuses, so people can build higher. In New York, that's not as, you know, it's not as big a deal as it is here where we're trying to protect our um, scenic views.
Yep.
Um, so I'd like to try to find other ways to incentivize them building up. Whether it's some tax benefit or something. Um, but it's definitely a need and if that's the solution that works best, I certainly consider it seriously.
Thank you.
Lisa, if I could follow up?
Sure.
Uh, almost every developer that I've heard of will refuse to give you a promise as to whether it's going to be a fulfillment or a distribution center until after it's been constructed.
Right.
Uh, so uh, it would be nice to say that you will only take the
Oh, I know, I, I, I'm not saying that.
So how, how would you deal with that? If you're really not going to know.
You're really not going to know until they bring the tenant before you, and it does come back around when the tenant. Um, but one thing I do is I'd like to see site plans, um, two options, one for the fulfillment versus the distribution because there are intrinsic differences with needs for trucks and parking, et cetera. You're not going to have the same amount of employee parking. Uh, and impacts on the local traffic and roads from all those trucks. But um, getting really to your question, I don't like to see these warehouses getting built everywhere else except Palm Springs, and I, I think we do have to to somehow accommodate as best we can for the uh, for the tax base. Um, that when in North Palm Springs, I know there was some concerns with the view corridor of the mountains. And um, I think all that has to be looked at, but I think at the end of the day, it's a business decision and um, we have to do what's best. And if we don't do it here, it's just going to happen, you know, further down the I-ten freeway somewhere, somewhere else. Or we're actually very close by in Cathedral City, yeah.
Any other questions? Fascinating you worked on the website center.
Yeah, that's another whole story. I do have copies of my resume. I don't know if you guys got it with the package. It, it goes into
It's in the packet, yeah.
Yeah, it goes into some of the projects I did with the city. And um, and also a little bit about trade centers, but that was um, pretty dramatic. Yeah. Be happy to talk about it.
I would love to hear, but thank you, thank you for coming in, thank you for your willingness to serve and
Yeah, I'd love to serve, I think I can make a, a contribution.
Yeah.
And um, share some of my knowledge, so, great.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um, okay, next we have Megan Ardees. She did apply last year.
Okay, she did?
Yep.
Always remember that. Yeah, we had asked Anthony.
For planning too, I think. I know what you mean. All positive, no?
No. Melissa applied last time.
Oh, Melissa, you're right, I'm sorry.
No, Melissa's different.
Yep, yep, yep. Hi, so
Hello, everybody.
We don't know you, but I'm Mayor Jeffrey Bernstein, Mayor Potem on the heart, Councilmember Grace Garner, Kristy Hallstitch and Lisa Middleton. So these are very quick interviews, we're sorry to keep you waiting already, we're running behind, so about five, about ten minutes. Um, tell us your understanding of the planning commission and why you would like to serve.
Sure, so I understand that the planning commission um, helps the city council uh, make decisions when it comes to applications for development, so any projects out there that companies are looking to do in the city. And we also look at zoning issues and uh, general planning and projects or ideas, um, proposals that other people bring forth um, for the city to either, well, hopefully for the city to approve. And so that's my general understanding of what this commission does.
Great. Alright, what, what technical skills uh, do you think you, that you have that you're going to uh, be able to contribute to the commission's work?
Sure, so um, I hope I answer this correctly. Uh, I believe that because I have a passion for being involved in my community um, through One P S, through the Desert Haven Gateway Estates Community Action Association, through other organizations that I'm a part of, um, I think that because I'm active, actively involved, um, that does bring forth a a background, um, knowledge and perspectives, different perspectives that can be used to make informed decisions that impact the city of Palm Springs and our residents and the locals that come in and out of the city.
Okay.
So just, you know, for example, um, knowing what the challenges are. Um, knowing what residents like and don't like, even something as simple as that, I think goes far into making decisions that um, impact their lives here in the city.
Great, thank you. Just quickly, you know that me, the, the planning commission meets twice a month and is extremely high volume of work.
I see that, it's Mondays and Wednesdays, but, or I know it's twice a month.
Twice a month, I don't know what day it is, but yeah.
I don't want to be there, but some meetings last three hours.
Yes.
I saw that, yes.
And that's not a problem.
No, that's not a problem.
Grace, I, Councilmember Moore?
Not yet, let me think.
Any other questions? I will, then.
Go ahead.
So what do you think are some of the biggest challenges now with the planning commission in terms of how we're moving forward? You know, we're going through a zoning code. We, we obviously need a housing, but we have all this development that's necessary for our economy. How do you see those challenges in the planning commission?
Sure, um, it's, it's really hairy, first and foremost. But I think that's uh, having knowledge of not just what the planning commission does, but other um, commissions, other groups like um, sustainability, um, housing, um, kind of having uh, an idea of what those challenges are in those specific groups and how they intermingle with this specific group. Um, can really shed light on best practices. So I feel that with housing, um, we're trying to preserve our scenic views with the entrances and exits and then out of Palm Springs, all of those um, are things that we really have to keep in mind when making decisions, when approving projects. Um, so I, I hope I stayed on on point, but um, I feel that we kind of have to go above and beyond and be um, knowledgeable of what the other groups are trying to do and make sure we're in line on, on the same page. Um, that way we can get ahead and not, you know, fall several steps backwards.
Right, right.
I don't think we've actually asked this of just why specifically planning commission, what about planning commission really interests you?
Sure, um, so I've always been interested in uh, in investing in real estate and housing, um, and how that impacts specific groups, how that impacts different groups. And I feel that our, the people that live in Palm Springs are the heart and soul of Palm Springs, and only we know what's going to make Palm Springs better going forward. So um, I feel that when we have all these different agendas and different, um, I guess, different um, interests in our city. I feel that it's, it's important that we rely on, um, on our own people, on our own, um, our, our interests, our goal in order to not just be inclusive of all the interests, but making um, the city of Palm Springs somewhere that we want to stay, that we want to live in. Um, I feel like it's just all interconnected. So um, the planning commission has a very big role in making Palm Springs one of the best cities in the world, well, in the nation, you know, um, I, I wouldn't go as far as the world, but maybe. Um, we are the Mecca when it comes to golf and stuff, so. Um, but you know, in order to preserve that title, I feel that we have to be inclusive, we can't need voices out, we can't need groups out. And we really have to lean on each other's perspectives um, to make that really happen, to um, not just make it happen, but be inclusive of other interests that are trying to be a part of Palm Springs too.
Great.
So I think that's special and that makes us special.
Any questions? Anything else you want to tell us or ask us?
Um, let's see, ask or tell? I guess not. I thought I had more to say, but no, just thanks for having me. Um, good luck to everybody that came and, and interviewed with you guys. Um, everyone that's been a part of the commission has done a great job so far and it's really exciting to pop in and kind of see what's going in, what's going on here and there throughout the meetings. I know this month there's a council meeting, I guess. On the twelfth, it's canceled, but um, yeah, so thank you.
Yeah, so just, and then just so you know, we have four positions and three incumbents, so we may only have really one position, so it's but thank you for applying, thank you for your service, thank you for everything you're doing for the city.
Of course, thank you, guys, have a good day.
Thank you, Megan.
Thank you so much.
Next we have Rod. Another District Two.
Lots of twos, he really represented.
It's the hardest.
Jeffrey has a lot of choices.
What's that?
You have a lot of choice.
Welcome, welcome, have a seat.
By the way, you still can sit up at the table if you would like, feel free. I see you straining your neck, but free to
Realize.
Real view.
I wonder why they're looking over there.
Can't see people's faces, yes, so free to join.
Rod, I am Mayor Jeffrey Bernstein, Mayor Potem on the heart, Councilmembers Grace Garner, Kristy Hallstitch and Lisa Middleton. So uh, thank you for applying for the planning commission. Um, just so you know, uh, you're very quick, we're already running behind. Okay. Uh, but they're about ten-minute interviews or less. Um, right now, we have four openings on planning commission, but there's three incumbents who have re-applied. Who, um, most likely really just one position opened it, so it's a great race, but thank you for applying. Um, tell us a little bit about your understanding of the planning commission and why you want to apply.
Um, to be honest, my understanding is limited. Um, I would assume the commission takes my primary focus is to plan the future of the city, uh, for growth, um, to make it continually viable, attract a place to live, balancing that with business and the people that live here. Um, call a home full-time versus part-timers. Um, I'm a full-time resident. Um, I'm, I'm primarily interested because I, I just want to get involved in public, public service. I've always been in the private sector, um, have a deep understanding of finances, was in a financial technology company for forty-nine years. Um, dealt with large banks, so I understand budgeting, I understand financial restrictions, but balancing that with growth. Um, also with people, I managed up to four, a group of four hundred people at one time. Uh, obviously direct reports under me. So I'm just, I'm just looking for something to do now that I'm retired. I retired late in life, I'm seventy, but um, I want something to do because I'm still pretty active and energetic and only can offer something to the city.
Right.
That's it, in a nutshell.
How'd you select the planning commission? Are you interested? I see in your resume, your application you put that you're also might be interested in the airport commission. Can you just speak a little bit about your interest in planning and any other commissions?
Yeah, the airport commission especially, um, I flew a lot for work. Um, I love the airport here, it's, it's amazing, but it's got to grow. Um, it's, I see large jets parked on the tarmac, um, which could be inconvenient at times for, I think, for people coming to visit here. But again, you know, we, you don't necessarily want three hundred flights a day, I don't think. Um, but, but it's got to grow. Um, it, it's for safety reasons and again, to attract people to come here, to spend their money to make the city grow, you know, tax revenue, the revenue is important, I think. Um, continue to make the city what it is, so that one, that one really interested me the most and this, the planning, I think, was overall, I think, would be the second one.
Thank you.
Great, right, actually should look at Measure J one year because
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Measure J is all about finance and the numbers, so you know, it's a good one to look at as well, but um, what's your?
Measure J is our one cent sales tax, and then the Measure J commission does a lot of oversight on budgets and
Yes. I would be all for that myself.
You would be great at that.
Yeah, yeah. What the technical background uh, are, are you bringing to the table as you serve as a commissioner?
Um, well, I worked for a national technology company, uh, so my technical background is at a high level understanding. I started out as a programmer years ago. But so I understand, um, technology from the perspective of, of uh, security, what needs to be on the web, what shouldn't be on the web. Um, and again, a balance of that. Um, but as far as being able to advise all of you on what's the best, you know, security software to use, or. I'd be limited in that respect, cause I didn't get that far into the weeds, I had people working for me that did that. Um, is that kind of where you're going with your question?
Okay, thank you.
Right, any questions? So, um, it, what, is there else, do you wanna tell us that you think we should know or questions for us?
No, not really, um, I read the paper religiously. Um, wish it came every day, it's a little bit spotty there, but, um, I'm just interested in, in the city, and I've owned a home here since two thousand one.
Yeah. I would suggest start looking at the, you know, the various commission meetings and stuff, just because I think there, there's a lot of really interesting things, and it's probably one of the best ways to learn what's going on in the city. Not just planning, but I mean Measure J and parks and everything, really, they're probably the best way to see all the details that are going on. And they're interested, most of them, so, awesome, all right, well, thank you so much for coming, thanks for flying.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. The last one. Oh, another district two.
Disqualify. Welcome. Thank you.
Welcome, thank you for coming.
Not a problem.
Um, save the best for last. Yes, so I am Mayor Jeffrey Bernstein, and I know you, and this is Mayor Portam, Ron DeHart. Councilmember Grace Garner, Kristi Holstich, and Lisa Middleton.
Hello.
So, uh, these are pretty quick interviews, um, you know, we're trying, we have a lot to get, had a lot to get through today. Uh, just so you know, there's four openings on the planning commission, um, there's three incumbents though. So, uh, generally, probably only one opening, um, and also, this is, I'm sorry, I didn't introduce. This is Kathy Wormeck, who's the current chair of the planning commission.
Watched.
And Chris Hadwin, the planning director, um, yeah, so, uh, so you're familiar. So tell us your understanding of the planning commission and why you wanna apply, why you're applying.
Well, uh, I, you know, as you saw on my, on my application, I was on the planning commission in West Hollywood for seven years. So, I, and I was on public facilities for ten before that, so I was with the city of West Hollywood for seventeen. And when I retired, I stepped down, spent two years in LA. And then moved out here in nineteen, or in eighteen, rather, and, uh, I've had a, I've been a, I've had a house for twenty five years. Um, and I traveled a lot initially until that virus hit. And I also kind of needed to take a break from commission work. It was the planning commission in West Hollywood, and I was on the, I was on their, um, design review subcommittee as well. So, there was a meeting every Thursday for seven years. And it was just, the packets were huge, the developments were enormous, I mean, it was, it was the, you know, we had, like I said, I was, uh. I did public facilities for ten years, and we did, we did the library, we master planned both parks. Um, and then we built the new recreational facility at the West Hollywood Park. And then, two thousand and eight, you know, everything kind of tanked, so when I got on the planning commission in two thousand and ten, there was an enormous backlog. Of work, an enormous backlog of work, so it all just kind of hit us at once, and there was a lot of, um. Lot of multi-use infill projects, a lot of single-family homes were being turned down, putting up four to six unique condominiums. I mean, all the sunset, the sunset script development stopped, so all the hotels, you know, got refunded, and we were doing. We did the addition, we did a W, we did, we were doing one after another, after another, after another, I mean, square block profits, huge, huge stuff. With, with big developers, and it was, like I said, it was getting through that backlog was, was intense, the meetings were long. You know, they were going till the morning, often, yeah.
Those are long, but not quite that long.
Yeah, yeah. We do, one, one AM, starting at seven and not having dinner and going to one AM, when you have. When you have ninety, when you have ninety people to speak, you know, it's just a lot, it's just a lot.
I mean, ours is probably not long, they're big packets and they meet twice a month.
Yeah, no, I've, I've watched, I was at the last one, when you were doing that development out by Whitewater.
Questions, Grace? I'm gonna bring up something, you're putting an application with West Hollywood to balance between sort of development and tourism. And maintaining that small city feel, which is also clearly our.
Which is becoming an issue here.
Yes.
In my opinion.
What, what do you, what specifically?
I just, it's, you know, it was, I mean, I moved about, like I said, I bought a house here in ninety nine, I liked the. Well, and I lived in West Hollywood since nineteen eighty six, and it was a cute little town, and it's not a cute little town anymore. It's really not, it's overcrowded, traffic's awful, uh, you know, and Palm Springs is. Kind of going through the same kind of growing pains, it's getting very popular, and I liked it because I moved here in ninety nine because it was quiet. It was really quiet, nobody wanted to live in Palm Springs, everybody wanted to live down valley, and it was Ranch of Mirage and Palm Desert. And then modernism started and we got very popular. And, uh, you know, I mean, my street was all weekenders, and now they're all retired and they're all permanent. Um, so it's just, you know, watching that, just watching that change.
Yeah.
You know, and, and West Hollywood also had the, you know, we had, we had the problems of developers who would get entitlements and then not do anything. Like Fort Lawrence, and, um, you know, dream, I mean, it's, it's an issue, it's just a real, it's a real issue, and. We just got very tough, we got very tough, because if people wanted to be in West Hollywood, we demanded, we demanded great design, and, uh, there was a point where. We had an urban planner, Stephanie Reich, who's actually at San, in Santa Monica right now, um. And she, she would play the bad guy and I would play the good guy, where she would, she would bang on the developers and. Then I would meet with the developers separately and try to, you know, make the kind of smooth things over. In order to get stuff through, but, and that was really, it, it helped a lot, it helped a lot, and you know, I just. Like I said, I just needed to take kind of a ten year break, and I was kind of ready to, I'm ready to get back in, and I think, I think Palm Springs could use my help.
Right.
Just, just because of the, where you are, where West Hollywood was, when I, you know, all the time I was there, all the time I was there.
Questions?
So, how do you balance the preservation of neighborhoods and that, you know, with growth? And the, you know, affordable housing and other housing we need to develop?
Well, you just have, you know, you have to be really sensitive, we always had, we know, we always had an affordable component. We had, you know, we had an art company, you know, they had to do an art, donate to city art projects, um, and we. You know, you just look at the vocabulary of the neighborhood, and, I mean, it's, it's tough, it's really tough, um, especially when. Uh, West Hollywood like here was a lot of single-story, single-family, and then they get zoned up. And they can go to, you know, three stories, and, I mean, I had to tell a number of personal friends, you know, you don't own a view. And the house next to them would get torn down and up something would go, and they look at a wall, and their view of the Hollywood Hills is gone. Um, but we, um, after, it's probably about three or four years. We, uh, put together a. Planning guidelines for architects. And that saved a lot of time, and it had to do with. Just setbacks and where, where the garages go, visual intrusions, where you can have balconies, where you can fenestrate and all that. Because we, we got tired of architects coming back and. Here, the same thing with architectural view, they come back and they come back and they come back, and it's like, well, can you move this window, and they don't do it right, if you give them these. It's probably about a thirty page document, if they meet all those conditions, it goes through pretty quickly, it goes through pretty quickly. And, but yeah, affordable housing was, was a big, big issue in West Hollywood, a big issue. Cause like, like here, it was, that's why people went there, you know, it was an artistic community, you know, it was gay and lesbian, and. All the other letters, um.
Thank you.
And it's just, it's, it's lost, it's, it's losing that, it's losing that, it's, I mean, I'm actually going back this afternoon. Just for an overnight, and it's just, it's not, you know, it's not the same place it was thirty five, forty years ago when I, when I got there, and I, I, you know, I miss that. I miss the, being able to walk everywhere, that's the walkability part of, I lived right at Santa Monica and La Cienega, I mean, that was kind of like ground zero.
Nice.
And I was a block off that intersection, it was quiet, it was quiet. I mean, I never, I never really heard anything, but I could walk to the central, I could walk to the, go watch the restaurants, I could walk to bars. This, yeah.
Yeah, nice.
And, uh.
Anyway, great. That's my room, Lisa.
How are you doing?
Good, how are you?
Um, you know, developers say everything under the sun. But when I watch what they do here in the Michelob Valley, uh, they're more frequently choosing other cities. Uh, to build their housing projects. Uh, how would you balance, uh, the need to be. Strict when it comes to, uh, our intentions for design and other things. But also attractive enough that we're gonna be able to meet the kind of housing goals that we have. They're moving because we're too difficult, or?
That, that certainly.
That's what they're, that's what they're saying? It was only what they were saying that would be one thing, but they're doing.
They're doing it as well.
They're choosing the other city. Like Cathedral City? You know, we, um. We didn't really have that much of a problem, they really wanted to be in West Hollywood, just because of the, because of the location. And I guess, you know, we just, um, I never, we never really had. It, I mean, the, the interesting thing about West Hollywood is, well, you know, you know what it looks like, you know, it looks like. It looks like a shotgun, and there was, my first apartment was on Alfred Street, which was like one block east. Of La Cienega, and there's an alley that runs south of Santa Monica Boulevard, and mine was the first building, and it was a U shape. I was on the south side of that U, the north side of the U was in West Hollywood, the south side was in Los Angeles. I mean, the, it went down the divider, city line went right down the center of the building, so the. The issue that we had a lot of times is, the developers would find that line. And it was, I mean, it's so close, you know, you're a hundred feet off Santa Monica Boulevard. When West Hollywood is narrow as it goes, as it goes, uh, east, and they would just flip into LA. They would just flip into LA, so you'd get this great thing, and then all of a sudden, all these just, you know, multifamily buildings and apartment buildings, but, uh. You know, like I said, we, we tried to, we tried to help the architects as much as we could with those design guidelines. Uh, but most people really wanted to be in the city, they most really wanted to be in the city, I. We just demanded great design, we just demanded great design, and I think we were attractive enough to get them, to get them in there. But, you know, Palm Springs just has so many things that the other cities don't, they just don't, it's.
That's true.
In, in, in my opinion, I mean, it's just. Yeah, I was, you know, I was with some friends the other night, I mean, we live in a bubble, it's a lovely little bubble, uh, I lived in West Hollywood, it was a lovely little bubble. I lived in San Francisco, it was a lovely little bubble, um, and you get down, you get, in my opinion, you get down to Palm Desert and all that. It's just like Orange County, I mean, it's just these massive cookie cutter things, and there's no character to it down there. And Palm Springs has been able to, so far, uh, you know, ma- maintain its character, I mean, there's. There's not a forty eight at arenas and a forty eight of, you know, those little, little things, every, that look like stalogs everywhere, but, um. They're just a little repetitious, but they're, you know, they're. And in my opinion, they're kind of well-placed, you know, you know, see them, you know, see them all that much, but.
Okay. It was great, we've got a, we've got only five minutes left to wrap to our decision, so, but thank you very much, Roy, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
And we thank you for applying, for wanting to serve for the city, so it's, it's.
Yeah, I think I dropped, I think I dropped one off for airport, and one off for design review, and.
Thank you.
Great, so, thank you very much.
Thank you very, thank you.
Thank you. And that is it for our applications. Right?
Thank you.
Okay, um, so, should we first determine about our, we, our incumbents?
Yes.
Reappoint all three.
Do it, yes.
Okay, so, all three reappointed, and that leaves one position open.
I support the chair's recommendation, then, uh.
And she recommended.
Grant Wilson.
That was Chris Hadwin.
So Chris Hadwin emailed and said, well, you could summarize if you'd like for yourself, if you want me to.
And, and I'm wondering if, if the interviews have perhaps, uh, changed some of the thinking. And, and I really appreciate the questions that were asked about some of the goals and priorities, we obviously have to meet up there. Our own housing element, and some of what you've been articulating to us, and, and I think. Uh, originally, we had recommended Grant Wilson, because if you look at the composition of the other six with the three, uh, reappointed. Uh, we, we have a few members who are certainly active in the community, who are advocates, but who don't necessarily have the sort of planning. Skills and expertise that are really critical on the planning commission, and certainly in conversations with.
And, and I seconded the recommendations that Chris had made, I think I sent something insane, I agreed with him. Uh, I recruited Grant in part because of his. Uh, sequel background, because of just basic, basically his knowledge base. And I had worked with him for five years on the general plan, uh, steering committee, um, I recommended. Um, Megan, because I've worked with her a little bit, I was very impressed with her, when I heard her today, I think she would struggle. On the planning commission, um.
And my, my concern about, uh, several of these candidates is, is just. Are they, do they share the vision that the council does, and some of the obligations that we have under our housing element and under state law? For development and for housing specifically, and if there were a lot of concerns about height. And development, and, and those are very warranted, and I, and you know, we're going through a process with our zoning code to certainly look at establishing design guidelines to. Achieve some of what was talked about, but we do have twenty five hundred units of housing that we need to build by twenty twenty nine.
And the commission is not setting policies.
And we don't set policies.
But I was really concerned to hear a number of applicants talking about low growth, no growth, no height, no density.
We, we heard this, we, most skilled applicants talk in that direction.
Yeah.
We heard it from Grant, we heard it from, um, John Morale, who really rose higher in. My estimation, when I heard him today, than when I had looked at his resume, uh, I thought he was. Um, you know, he, he, he brings something, and people always think they can do more on the planning commission than we get to do.
Right.
About negotiations.
Yeah.
And that's, uh, often not our role, that's the staff role, much more than it's the commission role.
Um, you also were not here for Thomas's in the morning.
Right, I had heard him before though, and it had. Uh, he wasn't someone I recommended the last time, I've probably, I'm sorry, I'm not, I haven't been here for that. But I had some concerns about him, uh, just in terms of skill set.
Yeah.
Uh, not in terms, I mean, I've actually met him out in the field, um. He wants to do some things we can't do, uh, in terms of, uh. What developers do that a salesperson like him doesn't like, I mean, he, he wants higher standards that. Don't come from the planning commission.
Yeah, yeah, and so, higher standards are not something to be, to, to scoff at, but it is not.
No, it's an important thing, and, um.
Can we talk a little bit, I'm so sorry to interrupt, can we, um, cause I think we can dispose of some of the candidates typically, though they were, everyone was great, and appreciate it. Um, you do have a lot of experience on the planning commissioner, right, um, on the planning commission, you have Scott Miller, who was a staff planner for a long time. You have Lori, former city manager, Kathy, you have Robert, who's an architect, right? And then, I know Carl Baker, and remind me the other two sort of experiences, I know Carl Baker works.
Um, yeah, Carl, Carl's clearly, I've been surprised that he's. Been as much of a newbie as he's been on the commission, in terms of. And this, this is being televised.
It is, yeah.
So, in, in terms of the skill set he's brought, he hasn't, he hasn't brought that much yet. And the last person, um, on the commission is, uh, is really. He has a lot to learn.
We've gone back and forth, where, you know, ti- typically, we've gotten, um, primarily professional planning staff. Former applying for this commission, and when I first joined this council, they would just appoint them, and JR would ask. When I first joined this council, they would just appoint them and JR would ask every single person who worked, are you going to have time for this? So thank you for being thoughtful about that. Um, so then we tried to appoint more community voices and have that. Um, and so that's I'm trying to assess because you say we need more professionals, but I see that there's actually a lot of. Professionals on there. So you need someone who can hit the ground running, who's talking to me, like what, what are you looking for?
Right. It's, it's someone who can hit the ground running, um, and I was hoping that, that we could get more diversity with Megan. I don't, I. Uh, when we had Charlie on, uh, it, he was sometimes challenged with the planning, but really stepped up to it. I just, I was impressed with her on the general plan steering committee. Uh, I think she won't hit the ground running. Um, and that. David Murphy, who's also on the commission, has not hit the ground running. Uh, so we've got, we've got a little bit of that, uh, decisions. Most of the dialogue right now is between Robert, Lori, Scott and myself.
And it's, it's, and I think there is a role, I mean, and I think this is why in, in my email, I had recommended Megan as the second candidate.
Yeah.
I do think District One representation is important. I know Kathy is from District One, but obviously representing a different segment of that community. Uh, and she had served on the general plan commu- uh, steering committee, but even thinking about some of our more recent meetings where we're discussing the logistics center. The warehouses that we're talking about, we're getting into really technical sequoia conversations. Uh, and even some of the conversation with our current composition is actually now posing us legal. Issues on the sequoia discussions because we kind of went outside of the scope of what we needed to be talking about. So. I do think we need to find that balance. I understand community representation is really important, but this is really technical work. And so I think someone is, is, is going to feel like they're able to contribute more if they have the background.
Yeah, so I liked John, Megan and. Grant, I think would be my third.
I had John, Thomas and Grant. I like Megan a lot, but I think.
Thomas and Grant.
I was impressed with, uh, John, uh, as with Kathy a bit more than I, I expected, but. Uh, Grant's definitely my first choice.
Okay. And, uh, Ron, remind me yours.
Uh, well, Grant and, um. Uh, if I have a second, uh, it would be John.
Yeah, I think based on what you're, what you're looking for, I would say, say Grant. I did really like the things that Megan was saying, but based on your need, I think Grant makes sense, um. But I am interested in, just as a side note, how we get, um. People like Megan up to speed in terms of planning commission so that they can participate in the future. Uh, because of that technical aspect of it, you know, when I was on planning commission, having the legal background really helped, we're not. We also don't always need to have somebody with technical backgrounds, but we do need to figure out ways that we can. Um, get people the skill set that they might need to serve on these commission, on these technical commissions. So I just, I just pose that as a larger question of how do we do that?
Thomas has applied three times. He's got interest. He has experience in very related fields. Not specific, not.
Why can't we appoint, uh, point two alternates for that very purpose, for the, for that, to get the experience and.
I don't think the ordinance has an option for that, does it? Well, you get ready to expand.
Yeah.
Public arts, so you may.
We would have to do it by.
You would have to do that ordinance. It's a change of ordinance. It's not.
I'll just add into it.
But that's, that is, that is a good point. Having an alternate or two could really.
I think that, that. We, we are never going to give somebody like Megan that, that chance if she, if we. You know, at least with an alternate position, she can be exposed to what's happening.
Can see.
And I, I, I would be in favor of creating or adding an alternate position, at least one.
We do it for architectural review. We have up to two. We've had one for.
Other commissions have it, Major Jay has architectural review. They, I mean, they have it by ordinance, but it's not, this doesn't have it. So this, we have to do the change.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a great idea.
But we can, we can still pick somebody in anticipation of, of ordinance change. So we could recommend Megan, uh, to fill a position when it becomes, um, authorized.
Well, and just to clarify. I mean, we have difference, so the public arts has already come to us for to, uh, to expand their. Or, um, to expand the number of commissioners. It does have to go before council. It's scheduled to come before council. We have appointed two people. Should council accept? Vote to do that. We're not appointed. We have recommended two people. Should council do it?
Okay.
If this is something, how do you feel about having alternate or one or two alternates now?
More, more people makes it more.
Or more. So in that, are they voting members in that?
Alternates would not.
Then I think that that's.
Would they sit on the dais?
Uh, yeah.
Cause that would be good.
And I think it would be, you know, the commission could ask questions of them presumably and, and.
No, they, they can participate. They participate almost as full commissioners, but don't vote.
I don't know if we have with seven, if we have space for.
We have. Well, we'll figure that out.
We could do one.
You can, you can figure it out and we've done other things too, I think, where they had them.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Yeah, when I saw her on, um. Uh, on the commission that, that she was on, I think she's got capability of growth. Uh, I just, I just think she needs exposure.
Yep.
I mean, I just wanna, I will always advocate for not over emphasizing the technical ability because I've seen this. That's how the commission has been run for a really long time.
We've had the strongest commissioner we, we ever had with someone with no technical ability. Randy Lowe, I believe, is a member. Had, uh, no technical background and I don't think even understood the permits we were given. But always had the appropriate community response to decisions. So I do think that's. I think, uh, I don't think it always has to be technical. We've been sort of missing. Because two of our commissioners aren't contributing in that way. We've adding a third person might be harder.
Right. I mean, for me, I don't have a technical planning experience. I'm on the city council. Many of us do not have planning. Experience like that community voice is just really important too. So, um, anyway, yeah, I support. So what's your recommendation? It sounds like there's. Two, three people for Grant. To put in them, their top two.
The three incumbents, Grant and then create a alt with Megan.
I was a little concerned. I didn't like a lot of Grant's answers for, you know, being more pro-growth and. Like the affordable housing answers. Um, and all of that. So I'm concerned by those when we have so much. Obviously we want smart growth, obviously want to protect our neighborhoods. We want all those things. We're gonna, you know, their job is to apply the zoning code. You know, we'll set the zoning code, but those are my concerns. That's why he wasn't in my top two. So I will just say that out loud for.
I would echo that. I, I, I think, and I think that's why when I was first asked the question, I said, maybe we should revisit my email as, as I was. I was expecting to lean a little bit more with some planning talk about, I need to protect our communities, but we also need housing and I didn't hear that.
No.
I did hear that more clearly from John Morale. Do we want someone with the very clear technical skills or do we want someone who might, you know, understand the need for housing and affordable housing and, and a little more pro-housing there?
John, a few people had John as well. Grant and John.
John, Grant and Thomas were my.
That's why I like John because he has commercial development experience. He knows the technical piece, right? Um, we talked about view corridors and all the, you know, inclusionary zoning and all that. I've always wanted someone with development experience on the planning commission because otherwise what happens is. It comes forward and then no one quite understands the cost. And then personally I have my husband texting me like, you know that that requirement adds fifty thousand dollars to the ADU and makes it completely untenable to build? No, that hasn't come up in the process. That's why I asked you about the ordinance, because I think that there should be specific places. For like have a community member on a planning commission, have a developer or person, you know, like have some varied experiences. That are set, but that's why I like John, because he has the commercial development. He seemed really, really well-rounded. Less experienced in California, but probably able to get up to speed.
I, I liked his background and what he's break, was, would bring to the table. So if there's support for, for John over Grant, I'm, I'm okay. That's what your recommendation would be? Chris, between the two, yeah.
Where I was, I thought each of them had pluses and minuses, so I'm not sure that I would. Be able, but the other two, they're the.
There's so many good ones.
Perspectives on this, I think as planning director and the responsibility of implementing our housing element and some of, you know, the. The way that we're trying to, to really be progressive in our zoning code, I think the responses from John were more aligned with where I think we need to go as a city.
I agree.
Um, so we have John and then we're looking at, uh, we're looking at creating an alternate position.
You could do two alternates and do Grant and Megan, because they're both good, but if you want to start.
I would do, I would do one alternate to start, see how it goes, especially because there's room. For one, not for two.
Yeah, I wouldn't do two. I mean, we don't, people don't miss meetings. And so they won't have much chance to be voting members.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. That, that's okay with you or you want to?
I'm not gonna fight, uh, on that one. I think we're very close.
It's really close.
Yeah, I, I would still. Uh, I've been wanting to have somebody with, uh, development experience for a long time.
Okay.
If I could add slightly different, without trying to give either of you more work. We get an awful lot of folks coming into, applied for a planning commission. Who don't really understand what it is that planning commission does. Uh, and what the work is actually like and. Uh, particularly from planning commission, a class, so you think you want to be a planning commissioner. Uh, that would give folks in the community, it means to, to come in in a very, uh. Safe place, get information about what the work is really like, what you're, what you're actually going to be doing and if. What your goal is to, is to affect your minds or that kind of public policy. Uh, this may or may not be the place for you.
We get a lot of people applying for the very first time for a commission to the planning commission and I'd love to. Well, you know, weed those people out a little bit, um, and either send them to that or send them. I don't know, there was, you don't have to have a lot going on. Commission service, but you know, you should have some base level knowledge of the planning commission. It's a high level commission.
It's an, it's an old day rule, but the old rule in Palm Springs was you never got on the planning commission. Uh, until you had proven yourself on another commission.
That's right.
So we, we decided on John. That was our decision?
Yes.
And, and the three incumbents and we're gonna look at proposing to, um, create an altered position. Chris and Brett, can you figure out how that comes to council?
Sure, yeah, we'll discuss and then maybe, maybe as a second, as a follow-up to that, just so that can move quickly, um, to your point, have a member postage. Uh, looking at, um, adding some skill sets and requirements to the overall composition of ARC, which is a more recent change.
I would be careful. We've had a hard time with the ARC because we have.
Yeah.
And we're having, we're having a very difficult time filling it.
Come up with something more, that's less, less definitive, that is a little bit more guideline.
Yeah, that one applies every position.
We don't want, that's too difficult.
We just want, you know.
We should have someone representing community who, you know, otherwise you're gonna select for people just with technical experience, but. It's important to be a mom and understand like walkability and access. I mean, there's other experiences people bring that is.
Or economic development, that's.
Right.
But yeah, we can come up with others that don't all have to have specific planning commission or. Uh, planning staff experience.
Only if you think it's good policy for the commission will defer to you.
Okay. So that conclude, concludes that. Thank you very much. Thanks for all your insights. The great news is we have more applicants than we've been, yeah, qualified applicants.
We had as many this time.
Um, before we go, we have one other thing.
Oh, yeah, I have to.
We have to accept the resignations and appointments to the various boards and commissions. These are. The resignations and the reappointments of incumbents. This, we have another item coming up next week, which will be the ones that Mayor Potem and I interviewed.
Are we adding the incumbents from planning on there?
Are all? That's all done now. Planning was, we just decided that. We just voted on that.
Yeah, but they are on that, that list.
So they're all done.
So I.
Those people.
Move to approve item two with all of those except number seven, which is appointing for the Human Rights Commission. Cause the Human Rights Commission is on hiatus. I'd like to not appoint a member.
So we have the discussion.
Oh, the discussion, because I moved for them to be on hiatus. I would delay that decision. Until that discussion and action by council potential. We can always bring it back.
They can still be on hiatus, but I don't, this is the chair and I don't think we, I think he should be reappointed.
I support his reappointment and I would do not believe we have the legal authority. Uh, to put them on hiatus in this meeting. We've not agendized anything around that just.
No, we can't discuss that, but the appointment is on the, uh, agenda, so we can absolutely do that. So I would just move to not take action on that item yet. You can add it to a future agenda. That will be my vote.
You would vote?
I will vote no.
I'm moving on.
Delaying the decision on item two, seven.
I do not think we should delay this decision on that.
I think it will send the wrong message.
Yeah.
So I would, I would say no.
Okay, so we have approved that three to two?
No, I mean, I'm, that's, I, I was.
We have to.
I'm, I'm, I was, I didn't have an opinion. I was just seeing where council. So, I mean, I don't know. How did you wanna?
It's an agenda item to.
No, I understand what it is, but I mean, I'm not, I don't have a opinion. I'm very neutral on it, so. If we can.
Do the full number two.
Okay. And with that.